7:30 PM via teleconference. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Livering and Alderman Lou will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Mighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are a providing access, public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to this agenda or to the city's website for the meeting link. Joined by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 854-9424-5358. The password is 091623. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We are also, have also provided the public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Public Health Department. We've provided a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via telephone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. We will be adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Please also let us know if you can hear us. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Clay.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings and I'm alone.
Alderman Kelly.
I'm here. I can hear everyone. I'm alone. Yeah. Oh, and I'm social distancing. Knew there was a fourth one.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm here alone. I can hear everyone and I'm social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I am alone and I am by myself. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, I am here and I am staying at home per the Governor's orders and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I can hear everybody. I am alone and I am social distancing.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I am alone. I can hear everybody and I am socially distancing.
Alderman Lou.
I can hear you. I'm here by my lonesome and I'm socially distancing.
Alderman Jerry.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings. I'm here alone and following the distancing orders.
Alderman Loz. Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present. I'm alone and following social distancing orders.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am present. I can hear you. I'm alone in this room and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here. I'm alone and I am practicing social distancing.
You are 14 in attendance.
Thank you. Alderman Loz did contact me to let me know he would not be able to join us this evening.
Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Volner are also in attendance. Mayor, do you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, I'm struggling with the computer. Sorry.
That's okay.
You went off the screen. You know, a lot of things happened right then. Yes, Madam President, I would. I have a few items to cover and I will try to do that succinctly because I know there's a lot of business tonight. First, one of our efforts to help small businesses recover from the COVID-19 closures was, of course, to expand the dining, outdoor dining on Main Street, consistent with the Governor's and state orders regarding restaurants. And we got some comments about that, which I really wanted to relate because this is a definitely a group effort. A lot of people involved in making this happen. The first was from Michael Buckley, who owns two of the restaurants downtown on Facebook. And he said, "I would like to deliver an overdue declaration of gratitude to the mayor's office, the aldermen of Nashua, and especially Tim Cummings for having the vision and forethought to engineer on very short notice the narrowing of Main Street to allow us to expand during these difficult times. I know I can speak for the entire restaurant community when I say it made an incredible difference and probably saved many of us. I for one will be forever grateful." Signed, Michael. Secondly, there was not a post but a letter from Stella Blue, which is a restaurant on East Pearl, signed by Jeff Bois, one of the owners, which says, "I want to take a moment to express our appreciation." It's addressed to Mayor Jim Donches and team, which includes the Board of Aldermen. "I want to take a moment to express our appreciation for your dedication and ongoing support for Nashua's restaurants and small business community throughout this pandemic. The steps you have taken to increase capacity and drive foot traffic has been a game changer. I feel like I can speak for all of us downtown when I say thank you. The ability to come together is essential for communities to heal, to innovate, and to adapt. I am confident that Nashua will come back stronger, more resilient, and better than ever. I am Nashua-born and bred, and it is incredible to see and feel the power of the community coming together through the various initiatives. Downtown Nashua has never been so vibrant, and in a short time, it has truly become a destination. Thanks and keep up the good work." Again, addressed to basically the whole city. And I wanted to read those because this is a project that we worked on together, one which has had a major effect, a major beneficial effect, maybe has changed downtown forever, and in the words of Michael Buckley, has probably saved many of us. So I thought you should hear those, hear those words directly because you were clearly and very involved. Secondly, Madam President, of course, we have the budget tonight. Now, this is an issue which I know we're all concerned about. Under the conditions that we are operating, no budget is easy to make. People can disagree and have reasonable points of view and still disagree about exactly how these issues should be handled. But we are dealing with three major challenges at this point, looking at this budget and the ones that are coming, next year particularly. First, the rising healthcare costs. For two years of running, up $3 million. That $3 million figure is point and a half on the tax rate, or the combined six is 3% on the tax rate just by itself. Now, that was a condition when I proposed the budget. I proposed the budget back in February, pre-COVID-19. We knew we had to deal with healthcare. We have a plan to reduce costs over time involving changes to the design of the healthcare plan that we offer. We've talked about the details of that before. Then, we proposed the budget. You began to consider it through the Budget Committee. Then we get hit with COVID-19, which is an unprecedented disease, a pandemic, one that's had very large economic impacts, one that the economic impacts are being deferred as a result of aid that the federal government is providing to the thousands and thousands of unemployed workers in Nashua. So we haven't yet really seen the impact of that, but that aid is, that $600 week aid is ending on July 31. So then we got COVID-19. Then, 10 days or so ago, the state hits us at exactly the wrong moment with a up to, we're still estimating, but we'll see, up to about a $3 million increase in pension costs. The pension bill that the city pays to the state pension system will increase by $3 million, or 2.8, or something in that, in that neighborhood. Again, a major hit, especially on top of the other two factors. I'd like to say that we do not know what's coming with this economic. We know with the 2.8, the $3 million. We can, we think deal with healthcare costs if everybody cooperates, but we don't know what's coming with the economics. Automobile registrations are down to some degree. We expect that state revenue could be off. We just don't know. And not all of you have been in city government when a major recession hits. If that's coming, we don't know. It is, it has a significant impact on revenues and assessments, a commercial assessments, which could go down and cause the tax rate to go up, just, just based on that. So we don't know what's coming. John Griffin, CFO, has done a memo where he looks at future tax rates, the one after this year, next year, fall of 2021, using a set of very middle-of-the-road projections. And we could at some point talk about what exactly those, all those factors are, but they're the ones that create the tax rate. He projects a 7% increase for taxpayers. Now, that is, in my mind, far, obviously, far too high. Much more than we want. We, therefore, before COVID, I had proposed 2.25% budgets for all the major departments, fire, police, public, fire, police, and schools, 2% for public works and City Hall departments. But based upon input from our police and fire departments, the Budget Committee has recommended increases in their budgets. Now, I, I, I have concerns about any increase to anything under this set of conditions. The, of course, we respect the fire department, the police department. We respect the officers. We appreciate the sacrifice that they've made to the city over the years. We're grateful for their service. But we also need to factor in the interests, especially in the uncertain times that we face, of the hard-working taxpayers of the city of Nashua. And therefore, in my opinion, really, the Budget Committee has recommended some reductions, fine, but increases, I don't think, in my view, are not a good idea. I know that, that, you know, obviously, people disagree about that, but that, my priority would be to maintain services, basically, as we have them, and hold, hold fast and then try to do the best we can with the tax rate as we, as circumstances develop. I would, I will now move to another subject, Madam President, that being the firefighter's contract. As I, as I mentioned, of course, we respect the firefighters. We appreciate everything they've done. And I think the way that negotiations were handled before the current contract was arrived at by the Fire Commission reflects that. We had offered in mediation 11% over four years, 2.5, 2.3 quarters percent every year. That is the same 11, 4, 3, 4-year increase as you, Madam President, and other members of the Board of Aldermen approved for the police sergeant. So we're trying to have equity. Same amount was offered. Yet we don't have a contract. I don't, and there's, there is different ways you can look at what this contract would do in terms of costs. Yes, it's 3, excuse me, 4, 3.5% raises, which without any compounding equals 14%. But sometimes when we consider the costs of contracts, we consider what they're going to actually cause in terms of the, the outflow of dollars. And because there are also step increases within the contract, the actual cost would be a 17% increase. For one that, in my opinion, and again, I, with utmost respect, I, in my opinion, one we, under these circumstances, cannot afford. Let me move to another subject, Madam President, and that is, one of the memos later on in the agenda is a policy change, one that would cause our policy regarding people who need to be out of work as a result of childcare problems, childcare issues. It would conform our policy to the federal law that was passed, that was passed regarding the same issue. So we're asking there that you approve that change, which is expressed in a memo, so that we will be in conformity with federal law. And that requires that, under certain conditions, we pay, we pay people 2/3 of their pay when they are out as a result of childcare issues for as long as the COVID-19 issue is with us. Finally, Madam President, we, I did, wanted to update you on the Safe Stations program. The way it's been operating will end on the 30th of June, which is, what, a week away? I want to thank the fire department for undertaking that project for those years. We think effectively addressed and attacked and worked with and the opioid crisis and got a lot of people into treatment. But for various reasons, it cannot continue, and we could talk about this all night, so I won't, won't continue in its present form. But I wanted to let you know that Bobby Bagley, Director of Public Health, and I, and the hospital, which is the so-called hub under the state's plan, and Department of Health and Human Services, even Commissioner Chibinet, have been working on, working to develop a plan that would replace safe stations and provide a place 24 hours a day where people could go, need to have help. The problem right now is that the hospital, the hub, that's Southern New Hampshire, on Main Street, very visible, but they're only open during business hours on weekdays. So we've got all these other hours of the week. So we're working with Revive, an agency that you're very familiar with, Jessica Parnell and others, to put a substitute plan in place. In any event, that, Madam President, is what I wanted to cover. And unless there are questions, I will conclude my remark. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to call for response to remarks of the mayor. If you'd raise your hand so I can call on you, it would be very helpful. Are there any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the mayor for the efforts that he's putting forward with the Safe Station. I cannot imagine how many things he probably has on his plate in combination with just the reopenings from COVID-19, addressing the concerns about additional flare-ups and the impact that it's had on all those different cities. There just wasn't a lot of time to, to address this, and I think it's taken a very significant amount of effort to even get people to the table to kind of figure out a workable solution. This is something that's like very intimidating, in my opinion, as a process, because the first time we put it together was sort of a miracle. So the fact that we're so far along already that we're identifying partners and gaps is, is very impressive. And I really want to thank Revive Recovery for being willing to step forward like that. I would encourage the community to find out what they do and how they do it, because this is going to be a very important part of that partnership, and they're going to need your help. They represent the community that is in recovery and has committed to the lifestyle of recovery. They're exactly the people that we want taking the lead on this, this issue. So I just wanted to thank the mayor for helping put all of that together.
Alderman Lou. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple of things regarding the mayor's comments. I've spoken with a couple of people who have enjoyed dinners downtown, and it has been, you know, wonderful. It's increasing business, and it seems like a really joyous atmosphere. However, I still feel that we have the, I don't understand why we're not doing a directed patrol. The, the police department is not trying to address the modified exhausts so that in downtown is not a pleasant experience. The mufflers are, are illegal. And a couple of weeks ago, when we were asked to provide funding for an X-ray for a bomb situation, you know, to have on hand for a bomb threat, I spoke with one of the members from the police department. I was told that we don't have the, the hardware that will measure decibels and decibels on exhaust, and that just really surprises me that we don't have something that seems to me to be so simple. It's a state law. It, it's a law that should be enforced, and we're not enforcing it. And I think it would make a big difference to the, to the downtown dining experience. The other thing that I wanted to just ask is, for the firefighter's contract, I, I can see that they're asking for something similar to a recent contract of the department. For that reason, I do feel conflicted, because I know that we have huge budget issues that are coming around the horizon, over the horizon. And I wonder if we, if the mayor, if you're just considering holding back on any of the other projects of the city to contain costs over the next year while we reassess our financial situation. And I'm, I'm thinking of just some of the projects that are in their early stages. Those are both projects that I love, but I wonder where the, the mayor's offices stands on halting those expenditures for.
Would you like me to respond, Madam President?
Sure, Mayor. That'd be great.
Well, of course, we need to continue to evaluate circumstances as they evolve, and as I've said, we don't know what's coming. I would say that we need to, in looking at future projects, one thing we need to consider is that often, infrastructure projects create a stronger economy. Even though they require an expenditure of money, the, they create economic activity. They build a stronger economy. And when, in a, in a situation like we have, where business, small business especially, may need a real jumpstart, may need, as anything we can give them to recover from the downtime that they've suffered, making infrastructure, making, sometimes making an infrastructure investment is worth doing because it will, in the end, produce more for the community than it costs. Think about the impact that we could have here. I mean, we have 10,000 people unemployed. All, you know, most of them getting, many of them, I don't know, getting $600 a week. That's $6 million a week, if you multiply that. If that, when that ends, there could be a downturn. And at that point, we certainly, that may not, may not, may be exactly the wrong time to decide, oh, we're not going to build anything that could boost our downtown economy or our city's economy. That may be the time that we need to invest to make sure that we come back stronger than we did before the coronavirus, before the COVID-19 crisis.
All said, Alderman, Alderman Lou. Recognition period.
Present.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection. I'll declare the minutes of the regular Board of Aldermen meeting of June 9, 2020, special Board of Aldermen meetings of June 10 and June 16, 2020, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications been received from John L. Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, Comptroller, regarding New Hampshire retirement system lower assumed rate of return from 7.25% to 6.75%. From Kim Kleiner, Director of Administrative Services, regarding health insurance fund and fiscal year 21 health insurance enrollment by union. From Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public. From John L. Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, Comptroller, regarding 7.03% tax rate increase projected for fiscal year 2022. And from Mayor Jim Donches, regarding coronavirus disease, COVID-19.
Yes.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Now, we have a 15-minute public comment period. Those of you that want to speak, if you can raise your hand or get my attention. Okay, anyone?
I am raising my hand, I think.
Okay, John.
Good evening, President Wiltshire. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Good evening to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen. I'm here tonight to speak on a resolution before you this evening. a resolution before you this evening of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Nashua and Local 789, Nashville firefighters. Alderwoman Lou, I appreciate that question that you would just ask the mayor. And I would like to just say that one of the most important infrastructures or benefits to the city, any city, would be the employees that are employed there. And that's not just the firefighters. I'm talking about the teachers, the police officers, the DPW workers, all of them. And it's about time that the city of Nashville invests in those employees. We started this negotiations back in March of 2019. We finally came to a tentative agreement with the city of Nashua. Yes, the city of Nashville, because they were across the table from us. We were negotiating with them in good faith. And we finally came to an agreement the end of January, beginning of February. I asked one question tonight after speaking to a few of you and listening to comments this evening. If there was so much respect for the firefighters in the city of Nashua, why did it take us almost a year to come up with this agreement? I understand the mayor stated earlier that the offer on the table was 11%, but quite frankly, the members of the negotiating team weren't ready to just accept 11%. We felt as though we wanted more. We deserved more. Our members deserve more. We've been on the front lines of this pandemic. We've been on the front lines of anything that the city throws at us. We're asking for a fair wage, fair for the city of Nashua, as well as the city, as the employees of Local 789. I urge you all to do the right thing and vote in favor of this contract this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? Chief Rhodes.
Good evening, Madam President, Honorable Board, Mr. Mayor. Just to be perfectly clear, the decision to end the safe station program was my decision with my command staff, based upon the rules of engagement, so to speak, that had changed. Our, our task, our charge is to provide public safety to the citizens who are taxpayers of the city of Nashville. Any delay in our employees getting to our citizens' emergencies is unacceptable when we're trying to deal with people who are coming from other communities. We have documentation. They've come from around the country to come to our safe station program. I just want that to be perfectly clear to all. The firefighters had nothing to do with this. They have done their job in the past. They're doing their job today, and they will continue to do their job. They are not, they are not looking for anything exorbitant, but some of you know I spent time as an elected official in Concord. I understand. We don't have a crystal ball, but we have employees who have done an incredible job over the last four years of this opioid crisis. When no one knew what to do, your firefighters and the city of Nashua stood up, and they took care of the problem. Excuse me, my wife is walking by. Sorry. The fire department is not nice to have. It's a need to have. We have a safe city. We are constantly rated as one of the safest cities in the country. We are rated as the safest city in New Hampshire because of the dedicated employees that you have working. And again, I'll reiterate what John just said, and not just the fire department, your police department, your fire department, your public works, your school department, our libraries, everyone. All we're asking for is to take a serious look at this. And yes, we don't know what the future is going to bring. But your employees have put it out there for the citizens of Nashua to create a safe and vibrant community for all in the past, and now they're looking for a little something for that. So I thank you for your time. I know this is a very tough decision, but in the end, without our employees, we have nothing. We're not the number one city in the United States, safest city. We're not, we're not the best in New Hampshire. It, again, I apologize for hopping in again, because a lot of this stuff was said before, but I just think it's very important, because you have an extremely dedicated group of employees at Nashville Fire Rescue who are not looking for anything exorbitant. They're just looking for, for what I believe is due. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Public comment? Anyone else before we move on? Okay. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding approving and placing on file a contract for Great American Downtown to assist with implementation of the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Project.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Schmidt.
I was muted.
Yeah.
Geez, and I said that also nicely. Let me try again. Thank you, Madam President. I moved to accept, place on file, and approve the professional services contract related to the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Project in the amount of $24,000 to the Great American Downtown and to authorize Economic Development Director to sign all related documents by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion.
Yes, yes, I have a question.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. I looked at the, the contract and under what appears to be the, the scope of, of work. The number one thing I see is provide strategic advice and assistance with management and execution of Dancing in the Streets project. And I'm just wondering if, is there anyone that can explain, you know, with COVID-19, are we, are we actually going to have a Dancing in the Streets program? And what exactly does that have to do with the Riverfront?
Anyone want to take a stab at it? Mayor?
Yes, Madam President. I was struggling with the computer again. Sorry.
Okay.
The, I, Alderman Jettie's question had to do with the GAD contract and the Dancing in the Street. So this has been something that has gone very well, but we, but I think we were thinking, we believe that a change in location would greatly benefit the, what has been a really high-energy project for the downtown. Up in Portland at a park called Congress Square, they run like a program almost every night or several nights a week. So we were thinking of expanding what we've done and bringing it down to Renaissance Park, where it is more in the middle of things in the downtown. At Renaissance Park, you have a couple thousand people living within, you know, sight of the park, between the units, between the apartments at, of course, Clock Tower at Cotton Mill Square and at Lost 34. Maybe it's not 2,000, but it's over 1,000 people. I mean, we don't know how many live exactly in each apartment. And therefore, we thought we could run a very energetic, improved, exciting program of dancing. Now, we're hoping, we don't, as I, we've already talked about, COVID-19, of course, affects everything. But we are seeing more reopening. And we, depending on conditions, we want to be sensible and safe, but given that these are mostly adults, not, you know, small kids or anything, this could be run in a way that enforces social distancing and still provides people a good opportunity. Masks could be required, things like that. Good opportunity to enjoy the downtown. So we were, so the, this can be paid for out of the TIF. These aren't, this would not affect the tax rate. It can be paid for out of the TIF, because this is within the TIF district, and activities such as this can be paid for. So that was the, and downtown, and Great American Downtown also needs a little bit of a lift financially, so this was part of the idea in terms of this contract.
Thank you for the explanation.
All said, Alderman Jettie?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The motion is to accept, place on file, and approve the professional services contract related to the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Project in the amount of $24,000 to the Great American Downtown and to authorize the Economic Development Director to sign all related documents. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess my question would be to the mayor. I want to see as much life downtown as possible with everything that we're doing. My concern is the the thing when we cancel fireworks and we're not opening the pools and we're not doing all these other things because of COVID, yet we would be promoting some type of dancing where people are going to be exhaling. And, and while I do appreciate that we probably can try to do as much social distancing as possible, is it realistic, I guess, is my question, and I, and I'm sure that the mayor or anybody doesn't really know that answer. But I wanted to ask, when would this be scheduled for us to do this particular event?
Well, as you've suggested, we want to be safe and sensible about this. So I can't really say when exactly we would do it. We were planning to begin in June. Obviously, that hasn't, that didn't happen. The, we would need to wait to see how conditions evolve. And if it seems like it could be done in a safe, sensible manner under the conditions that we face at the time, then we would proceed. If not, we wouldn't. The, we have seen, I, but I agree with your concern about safety, no question about it. But we have seen some significant progress in the last couple of weeks with the, well, the last six or eight weeks with the decline in positive tests in New Hampshire, and then in Massachusetts, there's been dramatic changes in the last few weeks where they're down to 1.3% or something like that, 1.5% positive tests. I mean, they are way down. So clearly, in this part of New England, we are making progress against the disease, but still, we have to be careful, and we would definitely work with public health, with the medical people in deciding whether and how to proceed.
May I have a follow-up question?
Yes.
Madam President. Get my next, kind of like roll into a couple of questions. What is, what is the lead time they would need to be able to have this contract in order to be able to get moving forward with some kind of decision? I understand that it's the TIF money. Is, are you saying that definitely it could be the TIF money? I guess would be my, my, and they don't need a whole lot of lead time. Would it be better just to kind of hold off making this decision until we had a better indication as to how things are going? I agree with you. All the numbers are going. New England is looking great. I just have anxiety that if we do something such as this, we're going to see numbers going up, maybe just here in Nashua, or people that are coming to it. I think this will bring people from other areas beyond Nashua. So I guess my question is, is this something we could put off, and is it definitely coming out of TIF fund? And it's not the money.
The TIF funds, definitely. Oh, do you?
The help.
TIF funds, definitely. That's the source of funds, so it doesn't hit the tax rate. The, we think late August, early September is the earliest this could go, but maybe it would be in the fall as well. So public health, you know, is looking carefully at each of the alternatives we're considering for anything, you know, pools where we're not sure we can keep kids apart. So so far, the decision has been to keep the pools closed, but in a situation like this, where a late summer, early fall, we may have much better health conditions than where we are dealing with the adults, it may be possible to safely run the event. But we would not, again, do this except in consultation with public health. I mean, I think Director Bagley has done an exceptional job, I mean, in balancing the the need for safety with the desire to open things up a bit. She's been very, been involved in all the decisions regarding downtown and everywhere else. So she is well-equipped to help us work through this or to decide it can't be done.
And I, and I agree with you, and thank you very much for your answers.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My, my concern is we're, we're talking a lot about finances and fiscal concerns, and this is a dance party, and I, I just feel that is a dance party really, do we really need to spend $24,000 to plan one? And my other concern is maybe we can get City Hall opened, because it seems strange to have a city where City Hall is still not opened, but we're having dance parties in the streets. So that's my feeling about this. Thank you.
I should have mentioned, Madam President, that our tentative plan, our target date to open City Hall to a certain number of people at any one time. And there were so many subjects, I didn't get into this one, but is July, is July 6. So there are going to be significant physical changes at automobile registration, city clerk's office, in the assessing office, and to some degree in the mayor's office, where there's a lot of public interaction. But the City Hall is going to open, at least in part, before those physical changes can be made. The Gopher Funds, the federal money can pay for these, these improvements. So come July 6, assuming we can, assuming we can get the technology to work by that time, which I'm optimistic we can do, we will have automobile registration up in the auditorium so that people can be spaced apart. There will be a limited number of people allowed in City Hall. People will need, will ask, will need to wear masks. But we will open, and for city, for most city functions, some will be, for many city functions, some will be by appointment only. But our goal is, you know, to continue to improve the the accessibility, again, consistent, sensibly, consistent with safety. But we believe the first steps can be taken on July 6 or thereabouts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. Several times in the last couple of days, people have questioned the optics that they're seeing coming from our decisions. This kind of decision being made at this time is probably bad optics. It may not be coming from the budget. It may be planful for the future, but perhaps, perhaps I should change my motion to table this. That would be my suggestion at this point.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Motion is to table. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Karen?
I don't think she's on.
I can't hear anything if you're calling me.
I can't hear anything either.
Well, we're waiting for you.
Everybody's waiting for me? Can any, you can't?
Yeah, there's no other, there's no other woman Clemens or not, Karen.
May I begin again, President Wiltshire?
Please do. Thank you.
Can you hear me, President Wiltshire?
I could not.
Thank, Alderman O'Brien?
No.
Alderman Cleve?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
No.
Alderman Karen? Alderman Clemens?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tanza?
Did you hear me?
We did not hear you.
I'm sorry, it was a yes. I don't know why I lost you. Thank you.
And I apologize, Madam Clerk, I was on mute. My vote is for a no.
Thank you both. I have Alderman Karen as a yes and Alderman Tanza as a no. Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
No.
Alderman Wiltshire?
No.
You have seven yays and seven nays.
And that motion fails. Do I have another motion?
I suppose we could go back to the original motion to accept and place on file.
Is that your motion, Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, it is.
Motion is to accept and place on file and approve the contract. With the clerk, please call, any discussion, sorry. Alderman Dowd?
Yes. GAD is, is right moment is having financial difficulties because some of the, a good part of their funding is, is related to the casinos and casinos donating to the charities, which have not been able to do that for some time. Also, GAD is responsible for a number of things that keep Nashua vibrant, such as the meals downtown, the, the stroll and numbers of other things. If there's nothing to keep them going, they may disappear. And I think that would be a tragedy for the city because the one thing we're really going to need when we come out of this pandemic is things to get people's spirits back up and, and get the vibrancy of the downtown again. And, and it's important that, that we, you know, it's not that it necessarily would be a dance. If that doesn't happen, we'll find other things that GAD can help us with and take some of the burden off of, as I see Mr. Cummings just joined us after his group, you know, that's why we're looking to have GAD get involved in that. They have a number of other things to do, but we want to keep GAD vibrant and busy and helping the city of Nashua. And this is one way we can do it. And I would strongly suggest that we approve this.
Alderman Cleve?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I agree with everything that Alderman Dowd just said. Then I have a follow-up question to that. If we approve this and it's being approved for the things such as the, the dance and so on. If they decide to use the funds to do something else in that same area, the riverfront and so on, do they need to come back to us? If they decided that that wasn't what they wanted to do? Because that's kind of what Alderman Dowd indicated that maybe they would do something else if they couldn't come through with the dance. I just want to get that clear.
Madam President?
Director Cummings?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to join this evening. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. I apologize for my casual attire. I wasn't planning on joining. I was watching the meeting remotely. I thought it may help to chime in and clarify some, some questions that were just raised. So first and foremost, this contract that is being put before you was brought about in a lot of ways to help me in my office. For those of you who may or may not know, I've been working a lot and I haven't been able to, to spend some time on some other projects. And so having an extra set of hands through a contracted service type basis to actually implement the downtown riverfront project is what this is trying to, to achieve and trying to do it on a limited scope. And so there are some things that I've asked Paul Shay because of his unique knowledge of the downtown, his unique knowledge of the riverfront and GAD's mission. It made sense to bring him in temporarily through GAD to, to help. So we stay on course with this, with this major project that I think is a priority for, for the city. So a couple of things that we've discussed is the downtown implementation of the master plan, which I believe we are working towards having a presentation to this body or a subcommittee of this body on July 8th. And then in addition to that, execute on some plans to operationalize the downtown riverfront. What does that mean? Some of you may have seen, we did yoga along the riverfront recently. That was through GAD's efforts. I mean, and already they're trying to do things like, like yoga, like kayak promotion, like dancing in the streets. And so we are trying to look at the riverfront in a different way. We're trying to use it as, as a natural asset that is a competitive advantage for us. That makes our downtown unique, but we need to start looking at the downtown in that way. And we want to promote, we want to have GAD promoting those types of activities. So it was along those lines that we were looking to bring GAD onboard temporarily to help move this overall project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cummings. Alderman Cleve?
Madam President, Steve Bolton, I think I can answer Alderman Cleve's specific question about whether if the Dancing in the Streets program doesn't happen, are other programs contemplated by the contract? And the fact is that the Dancing in the Streets program is actually only one small part of the scope of the work of the contract. It contemplates the yoga program as well. It contemplates general other activities in that riverfront, TIF district, marketing support, communications with the stakeholders. So it's, this is not $24,000 to have a single Dancing in the Street program. It, that may be one or more Dancing in the Streets, but it's also going to be apparently several other things.
Madam President, may I?
Alderman Cleve?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Attorney Bolton, and thank you, Director Cummings. I appreciate both of those explanations that it does answer a lot of the questions that I had. I am definitely all for this. I, I have seen the yoga. I've heard back positive things from the yoga. I think using our riverfront is brilliant. I think putting somebody like Paul Shay there to do this kind of work is also another thing that would be brilliant. He is a hard worker and someone who has a lot of energy to take care of all these things. Hearing all of these things, I am definitely for this and that it's come to, and not, not the taxpayers even.
Alderman Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Madam President, rather, or Chairwoman. Thank you for the information. I, I still feel the same way as I, I did. And perhaps it would be helpful if, I think over the period of the pandemic, I think that we, there has not been the, the contact with the city departments, maybe the, the, just the updates with the General Board of Aldermen that I had expected. I don't, maybe I need a better understanding of how the Great American Downtown organization intersects with, as they call it, our city employees. But I think part of my objection to this is is you know, just being presented with, you know, we want to spend $24,000 on this. And now it turns out, well, it's not really that. And I guess I'd feel, feel a lot better if the communications and the contracts were written with the expectation that they're going to be read and that we don't have to wonder why a dance in the middle of COVID-19 would be a good idea to spend $24,000. I, I know that this, the riverfront project is, is great. I, I thought that the I thought that the yoga at the Greeley House was simply an effort of a private enterprise into the open where they could have, you know, have people come and join a class without the restrictions of 50%. I just just a thought that we're just off-sourcing the business of the, of the community development or rather the economic development without a clear understanding. I, I just felt, would feel better if it was described more, more precisely or more exactly as, no, you know, this isn't $24,000 for a dance. It's, we need to keep this guy going or this organization going. And I don't know, it sounds like they need a steady stream of income from the city to do their mission. And that's what I'm hearing. And I just would like more, it to be a little bit more upfront or, thank you.
I don't think anybody was not trying to be upfront. I think what's in the contract is in the contract. Great American Downtown has done a lot here in the city. And they're having financial troubles because of COVID, because they, they haven't had any income, because their fundraisers have been down. But I, I think they were on the up and up with all of this. I don't think there was anyone trying to pull anything over on us.
I don't, may I follow up on that?
You may, yes.
No, I don't mean that I, I don't mean that our, that Mr. Director Cummings or Great American Downtown was better communications about, you know, to start off saying this is for the riverfront project. And well, it's for a dance. And then to say, well, no, it's for whatever we might decide. That's what I'm saying is not a, okay, let's not say a
Alderman, we can't hear you. Sorry. You all set?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else on the motion to accept, place on file and approve the contract? Alderman Clemens?
Thank you. So I just a quick question, was, did this go before Finance Committee? Or is this the first time we're hearing it?
If, if I may, Madam President?
Director Cummings?
So it's technically at $24,000. It would not actually be required to go before Finance Committee. Putting that whole issue aside, the way the TIF legislation that was written and adopted by the Board of Aldermen a while back says that any contract has to be approved by the Board of Aldermen. So any contract that is TIF-related needs full Board of Aldermen approval and is not a Finance Committee process.
Okay. So just to sort of back up what, what Alderman Lou said, if you could, if there's anything like this coming in the future, if you could just provide an explanation for us, I think that would be helpful. But I do think that the contract itself, if you took the time to read it, was pretty upfront. I kind of understood where it was going, but I wasn't sure if it was something that had gone before Finance before. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, just a reminder, my fellow Aldermen, that when we all have our video on, it slows down the bandwidth. So those of us with less bandwidth can't be heard. But I wanted to say some of what Alderman Clemens had said is, for the public, we did get this advance in advance and we did have the opportunity to read it. Obviously, living in Ward 4, I'm more familiar with GAD, so I kind of understood both the contract and the Dancing in the Streets happened several years. So there was nothing, I think, that was insinuated to be under the table. And I definitely don't think there anything, actually was anything. If anything, Alderman Jettie did his job a little more thoroughly than usual and was the one who brought up the whole Dancing in the Streets thing. And I think it was a completely logical concern that was raised by Alderman Cleve as well and Schmidt that, I mean, we can't just have something called Dancing the Streets go by and not comment on the social distancing aspect and all that. I would just say that unless we want to start micromanaging events, and I've put in my time doing that, so I would not recommend it. GAD does it well. They're doing it in concert with Economic Development, who is also doing things well. I have not always agreed with their decisions in the past, but you can't really argue with how effectively the concrete blocks are going or how businesses are, that should otherwise be struggling are, are doing business in a very, very different way. So this is a time where we have to be a little bit flexible and we have to let the people who are going to spend all week working on, you know, passion projects, do that kind of stuff. I also appreciate the attention to process that we've seen. And it is important to make sure that we communicate to the public effectively. But I think GAD has a pretty solid track record. As a nonprofit, they exist almost exclusively to do things for us. So I think we can trust them to kind of take this project and do it really well. And I don't just mean the Dancing in the Streets, because I'm probably not going to go to that. But I think they'll find a way to use this effectively in a way that promotes downtown and vibrancy in whatever shape it takes. I think we'll all be happy with it.
Anyone else? I see five hands raised, but no one wants to talk. So if you're not, don't want to speak, can you unraise your hand? Put your hand down. Okay. The motion is to accept, place on file and approve the contract. Further discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleve?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen? Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tanza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou? Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
I, 12 yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Dodges regarding temporary policy on emergency leave due to coronavirus COVID, July 6, 2020.
Alderman Karen? Alderman Karen?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Oh, thank you, okay. Keep losing you, yes. Here it is. I would like to make a motion to accept, place on file and adopt the temporary policy on emergency leave due to COVID-19 effective July 6, 2020 by roll call. And I have a question, please.
Alderman Karen. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I think this is great that we're following the federal law, but I do have a question for mayor. A couple of weeks ago at our last meeting, we talked about the vacation time for non-affiliated employees of the city because obviously no one's taking vacation time and we certainly would not like them to lose any of that. And I was wondering where we stand with that at this point in time there. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you for bringing this up, Alderwoman Karen. So the unaffiliated employees and we're, the, the policy we did on the public health employees allowed them to carry forward personal days, which they lose. Now, the, they, but they can carry forward vacation days under the ordinance. So, but beyond that, Kim Kleiner, Director Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services Director is, has been checking this out and can report further.
Director Kleiner?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. So we are researching the legislation that was brought in before you, prior, the mayor is correct, that was just addressing personal days that would be lost at the end of the year as of June 30. That's what the policy was addressing. We hadn't addressed vacation days as of yet. It is a, something that we are working on. We're speaking with division directors and we're gathering more information. The reason that we brought forth the personal days is, as you know, unaffiliated employees have their five days and they'll lose it at the end of, as of June 30. But there's other unions like UAW who have earned time. So it's different for different employee groups. We felt that the public health employees that had personal days, and we did reach out to all division directors and we discussed this. We felt pretty strongly that the public health employees that were all unaffiliated deserved to have those days carried forward because they absolutely hadn't had a chance to take those personal days. Where, when we looked at the balances of other employees, they had either taken the days earlier in the year or they had very little time left. And again, as of July 1st, they receive another five days for the unaffiliated. So that was just addressing those personal days and we'll certainly update the board more in regards to vacation.
Okay. Madam President?
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. So my question would be to either Director Kleiner or the mayor, if I remember correctly, your vacation days, you lose them on your anniversary, not the fiscal year. Am I correct?
So you can only carry forward two times your annual allotment. So it's different for many different people, but you're right. It's certainly not on your, on the fiscal year. It's on your anniversary date.
Okay, so we have time, so you have time to look at this to make sure no one is losing anything as they're moving forward in the next few months. I just don't, I, I think it's important that we, we look at all our employees. I think everyone has really done a fabulous job with this horrendous thing that's taken place. But so that's why I'm asking. I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence for all our employees and I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And we want to be very careful to make sure that we're reaching out and getting all of the division directors' input on their employees.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman O'Brien, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, I have to sign back in. Could you please tell me what we're voting on?
We are voting on the, we, the motion was to accept, place on file and adopt the temporary policy on emergency leave due to the COVID-19 effective July 6.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Thank you, I can hear you, thank you. Alderman.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wulsher.
Yes.
You have 14 yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 8, 2020 Human Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the Budget Review Committee meeting of June 10, 2020, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 15, 2020 Special Penetech Water Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 16, 2020 Planning and Economic Development Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 17, 2020 Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments.
There is none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 2023, relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget for the City of Nashua General Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend R 20023 by replacing it with a golden rod copy of amendments made at the Budget Review Committee by roll call. And, or the, I can read the, the changes if that's what the chairman would like.
That'd be great, Alderman Dowd, thank you.
Okay. The, the changes to the mayor's budget, the mayor gave us an appropriation of 284,000, 284,584,408. And we reduced that by 1,700,000 via the, the following actions. We reduced the Library Plaza renovations by $1 million. We replaced the mayoral bottom line reduction in the Police Department by $207,062. And we reduced a portion of the SURF transfer by that same amount of $207,062, having a zero impact financially on the budget. Then we reduced a portion of the contingency for educational priorities by $1 million. And we reduced the portion of the SURF transfer by $245,000. We then increased the portion of the contingency education priorities by 300,000, adding the 300,000 back to the $1 million in the motion, a couple of motions ago. And then we reduced the mayoral bottom line budget for citywide communications by $20,394. And we reduced a portion of the SURF transfer for the $20,394, leaving a general fund appropriation for this budget from the Board of Aldermen of 282,884,408.
Okay, the motion is to amend Resolution 2023. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wulsher.
Yes.
You have 13.
Alderman Karen says yes.
Thank you very much. You have 14 yays and zero nays.
And President Wiltshire.
That motion carries.
Okay.
Alderman Dowd.
Before we address the, the final vote, I would like to make one more amendment to the R 20023. You all received a memo from Director Kleiner on June 9th relative to the monies set aside for Workplace Benefit Solutions for Healthcare. In that memo, it, it said that we could reduce the $3 million that we were going to allocate out of the 2021 budget by 348,334, therefore still maintaining a balance in our healthcare account that would be carry us through the next year. In further discussions with Director Kleiner and the mayor and others, including President Wiltshire, it was determined that we could adjust that number to half a million dollars. And I would like to make a motion to amend the budget to take that half a million dollars and place it in general contingency for the budget so that it could be allocated later if and where needed.
The motion is to amend.
R 20023.
R 2023, by reducing 500,000 from the healthcare budget, the healthcare line.
The healthcare set aside, yes.
Discussion on that motion to amend. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Yeah, I'll hit my hand up.
Lori, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't see it, my bad. Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, so a, a point of clarification, are we, are we, are we reducing the budget by 500,000? Or are we just moving the 500,000 around? So it, it really doesn't lower the budget. It just takes it out of the, the healthcare contingency and puts it into some other contingency fund.
That's correct.
That, that's correct. It, it is moving it out of the healthcare into a general contingency so that it could be used for something else. And the reason that it's not taken towards the tax rate is, if we take any more towards the tax rate based on the motions we've taken before, that if you really need a detailed explanation, you'd have to get from John Griffin. But it would, it would exacerbate the issue that we might have in FY 2022. So we're not really changing the end number on the budget. All we're doing is taking it out of that health line and moving it into general contingency where it could be used for other things during the year.
Alman Jettie?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So I, I had originally looked at that memo and thought that the money, my initial thought was the money could go towards the tax rate, reduce the tax burden further. I can understand putting it into contingency. However, I feel that a better use of the money would be to put 255,000 of it back into the Fire Department budget so that they can fully fund the firefighters' contract. So I don't know if it's appropriate to make a, to amend the motion or if I can do that, but that's, that's what I would vote to do.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, my suggestion would be we do, we do this one step at a time or it's going to get too confusing. So let's do the one, one change and then we'll address anything else that people have towards the budget.
Sounds like a good idea.
Alderman Lou?
Uh, thank you. Alderman Dowd, could you just help me understand why we, what's the purpose of moving it from one contingency?
If, it gives us more flexibility when we determine how we'd want to spend that money. The healthcare account can handle the loss of that amount of money because of all the explanations in the June 9 memo and further discussions that we had. And the reason is that, that that was available was because a lot of the things that we had anticipated paying for in, in health expenses were not realized because people weren't going to the hospital for normal things because of the COVID-19. And we also feel that, given a couple of days from now, that that's also going to be the same reason that people aren't going to be rushing to the hospital under the same conditions to get what I would call normal medical things taken care of. They'll put them off for a bit further. The longer they put them off, the more savings we have. And it's been determined that a half a million dollars would be better placed in general contingency so we can address other things if necessary.
Just a follow-up, so essentially, we're doing it now so we don't have to do it later?
Easier to do it now.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam President, John Griffin, CFO.
John.
I, I completely understand Alderman Dowd's request. It's a little bit more complicated in that the, by us putting the pensions and benefits in each department's budget, there is no one account that you folks would be able to reduce to end up with what Alderman Dowd's requesting. So as a suggestion, I would increase the contingency amount as Alderman Dowd suggested, but I would reduce, take 100,000 out of police, 100,000 dollars out of fire and 300,000 dollars out of the school appropriation for benefits and that will create the desired result. And I say that because we true up, based on actual experience, we true up the expenses every year at the end of the year. So you'll basically be reducing 500,000 within the budget for those three line items and you'll, you'll get the desired result, which will put the 500,000 into contingency. So if I could offer that, that would be, that would be recognized by our auditors and regulators and all of those folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Alderman Dowd, do you want to amend your motion to do that?
Yes, I had had that discussion with Mr. Griffin before. I thought it was going to be very confusing to people, but that's in essence what we're doing in this because those are the places where this money would anticipate have been spent, but it's not going to be, we believe, and we feel confident. but it's not going to be, we believe, uh, and we feel confident that it hasn't been spent in the twenty twenty budget. Uh, so that money stayed in the, in the healthcare accounts for those departments that he just talked about. So those reductions in those departments will not impact them. And it, uh, meets the requirements of, of this motion, so I will amend, so the language reflects what, uh, Mr. Griffin just said.
Discussion on that motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alderman Karen said yes. I keep going on mute. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Alderman Karen. You have thirteen yays and one nay.
And that motion carries. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, um.
Nope, I'm sorry, Alderman Clemens, my bad.
Well, do you want to make the motion and then talk of a discussion that I think he wants to talk about?
The motion.
So the motion, the motion is for final passage of our twenty oh twenty-three as amended by roll call. Now I believe somebody can.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, make an amendment. And the motion would be to take two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from contingency and to put the two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from contingency into the fire department budget. And I'd like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Clemens.
So as we have, uh, heard from, uh, the chief and other folks, when the budget was, uh, crafted by the mayor, um, there was a five hundred thousand dollar cut roughly over that, but five hundred thousand dollars cut from the fire department budget. Um, and we, in the budget committee, put two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars back. And we did that, uh, a few motions ago by amending it, uh, the budget with the Goldenrod copy. So now that we have, uh, seen five hundred thousand in savings, uh, in additional savings from the uh, healthcare line, which I might add, a lot of that comes from the fire department. Um, we, my opinion is we ought to make that whole so that we can have a clear conscience in voting for the fireman's contract. It will at least enable the funding to be there, uh, for that. And that was one of the chief concerns that uh, were, were brought forward was that if we don't have enough funding in the uh, fireman's, uh, budget and the fire department budget, then there won't be enough money to fund the contract because we're not going to have enough money for that in next year's budget. So if we take two hundred and fifty-five thousand of the money which we just put into contingent, contingency. Sorry about that. Back into the, uh, fire department, uh, budget, that money will be there. And, uh, so that would be the purpose of, uh, this motion. And, uh, I would hope that, um, you all could support that. Uh, so that, that is the motion.
The motion is to cut contingency by two hundred and fifty-five thousand and add it to the fire department budget. Two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I agree wholeheartedly with, um, Alderman Clemens. I think that the, um, the fact that we are putting this into contingency and we're not using it to reduce the, um, the taxes. I think we should make the fire department whole, if I remember correctly. We, we did something similar to the, um, the, um, to the police department, um, with some of the amendments that we made. And I think it's just fair to kind of make them as whole as they had requested and so on. So, um, I completely support.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
Yes, um, so I, I think, um, Alderman Clemens is, uh, is much more experienced in dealing with these budgets than I am, as is Alderman Dowd. But, um, if, if we put this, uh, if we, uh, if we keep it the way it is, in other words, uh, if the, if the money goes into the contingency as, uh, as we just voted on, um, and we left it there, uh, then if, if in fact we vote to, um, to approve the firefighters', uh, collective bargaining agreement, uh, you know, the money could then be transferred from contingency into the fire department budget uh, to, to fund that, I think. Uh, however, if if we're voting, if we vote to put it in the fire department's budget now, we're kind of putting the, uh, you know, where the cart before the horse. I think we, we, we ought to wait and vote on the collective bargaining agreement. And if, if that passes, then, then a transfer could be made. If it doesn't pass, then, uh, that, that money sitting in the fire department budget wouldn't, wouldn't, uh, be, would no longer be required until the, uh, you know, a further collective bargaining agreement came, came out of negotiations or or, uh, fact finding or whatever. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm going to vote against this, uh, against doing this now. I think it's premature.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Alderman Cleaver? I'm sorry, Alderman Cleaver and then Alderman Tenza.
I thank, uh, Alderman Clemens for this, uh, idea. I think it's a brilliant idea. I'm all for it.
Thank you. Alderman Tenza.
So, uh, Madam President, just a point of order, a question for either Attorney Bolton or, uh, Mr. Griffin. If this amendment does not pass, what opportunity would we have, um, if the firefighters' contract passes later on in the meeting to, uh, assign this money from contingency, um, back into the fire department budget?
You can do it whenever you want it.
I, I concur with Attorney Bolton, um, as Alderman Jettie indicated. You do it now or do it later. I would, I would suggest one change. What, what you want to do is basically eliminate the mayor's bottom line cut. That's where you'd need to put a positive where there's a negative. You don't need to increase the salary lines as we reviewed a few times. That would be my only change. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens, did you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, that was my intention, um, was to make that whole and I, or roughly whole with, uh, with the two hundred and fifty-five thousand, but it was to restore that bottom line cut.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, uh, and Mr. Griffin, uh, at, at some point, uh, we should be transferring the money for negotiations in the fireman's budget, just like we would with any other, to, uh, the, uh, contingency negotiations account. Is that correct?
Um, yes, as Alderman Dowd indicated, whatever that final number is on the line inside the fire budget, my recommendation is to move that amount down to contingency negotiation. So it's out of the fire budget before it's approved by the Board of Alderman to transfer it back into that budget. So that, that makes sense, Alderman Dowd.
So whenever that number, as soon as we decide on what that number is, uh, that amount of money should be transferred just like we always do with contract negotiations. I'm sure Alderman Clemens knows this from the past. And we put it in and the, uh, uh, a contingency for negotiation so that it can be used strictly for negotiations.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Um, based on that point, I, uh, want to thank Alderman Jettie because I think that his reasoning makes perfect sense. Um, if we're going to have to move it, then why don't we just make one vote on this and we'll, you know, otherwise, we're going to have to make another vote by the end of the, the evening. So I would like to, uh, suggest we go along Alderman Jettie's, um, recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else? On the motion to amend. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
She's getting muted.
Yes.
Alderman Karen, I can hear you now.
Oh, my vote is no. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
You have eight yays and six nays.
And that motion carries. So the motion before us is for final passage of resolution twenty twenty-three as amended. Further discussion. Alderman Dowd.
Mr. Griffin, what, what's the amount of money that we need to make a motion to transfer in the, into contingency for negotiations? Mr. Griffin?
Get myself off of mute. That number is one million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three twenty-five.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to transfer one million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-five out of the payroll line in the fireman's budget to contingency negotiations so that it can be used for when the contract is settled.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion.
Uh, yes, I have a couple of questions on that.
Alderman Clemens.
Um, so on this motion here, is this something that has to be done this evening or is this, can this be done after, um, July first of next year?
I was told by Mr. Griffin that we should do it this evening. Yes, uh, we always do it at the end of the, of the budget hearing. If there's anything that's, that came up that needs to go into negotiation, contingency, we need to move it.
So ma- may I ask a further question?
Alderman Clemens.
What happens if the, if we move this money out of the, uh, department budget and then the contract fails?
It's still there for negotiations as far as I know. I don't know if somebody wants to chime in on that.
Um, John Griffin, oh, the money, the money would be there and would not be transferred. The amount that would, that would be transferred would be the amount to pay for the contract in fiscal twenty-one.
Could, could Corporation Counsel comment on that?
If, if you move the money from the payroll line in the fire department, the contingency negotiations and the contract, uh, before you tonight, the cost items, uh, does not pass, the money is there, uh, and presumably at some point, a collective bargaining agreement will be negotiated, the cost items will pass this board, and then the money will be available for transfer into the fire department, uh, to meet those expenses.
Thank you.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Just curious, and as, um, August approaches, how is payroll met for that department? Do transfers need to be made from negotiations to payroll again?
Mr. Griffin, can you answer that? Or Attorney Bolton, one of you?
I, I can't. The amount left in payroll will be enough to pay the payroll at the current rate of pay.
Okay.
The, the amount in contingency negotiations is an amount that would be available to transfer in if wages increase.
I see.
Under a new collective bargaining agreement.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else on the motion to amend by taking one million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars out of the payroll fire department put into contingency negotiations? That's the motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry, Alderman.
Oh.
Wiltshire.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Um, I just want to make sure that I fully understand, uh, what is before us here. And perhaps through you to, um, Attorney Bolton. Uh, my question is, if we put this amount in, but the negotiations use less, do we have to then make another motion to move it? What, what happens with that surplus?
Well, you don't have to. It would be available if you desired to. If it wasn't spent, it would be a surplus, uh, which could be assigned to another project or could uh, just remain in the general fund, increasing the general fund balance. Or it could be applied, uh, to reduce the amount that would have to be raised in taxes for the next fiscal year.
Okay, so it's not, okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries. The motion before us is for final passage of resolution twenty twenty-three as amended. Further discussion on that. Saying none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. For, we now have a past budget for FY twenty twenty-one.
Resolution twenty twenty-three is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty twenty-six, adopting the twenty-twenty consolidated plan and authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Uh, thank you, President Wiltshire. I would like to make a motion to amend R twenty twenty-six by replacing it with a golden round copy of the amendments made at the Human Affairs Committee by roll call.
The motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion. Anyone? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, I would like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty twenty-six as amended by roll call, and I'd like to speak to that.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Um, so this is just the final um, it is the final vote on the work that the Human Affairs Committee has been doing to allocate the CDBG funds for the year. Um, thank you to uh Karaskina for all of her work in terms of what our consolidated plan would look like this year. I think the committee did a wonderful job of really prioritizing um putting a good amount towards the rental improvement program, knowing that housing was one of our number one things on the consolidated plan. So um I thank everyone for their hard work and I appreciate uh all that went into this.
Okay, the motion before us is for final passage of Resolution twenty twenty-six as amended. Any further discussion? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Cleve.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
For fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-six is declared duly adopted as amended.
Third reading of Resolution R twenty thirty-nine, authorizing Penachuk Corporation and Penachuk Waterworks, Inc. to issue taxable bonds of up to seventy-five million dollars.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty zero three nine by roll call.
The motion is for final passage of Resolution twenty-nine twenty dash thirty-nine by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Saying none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
For fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution twenty thirty-nine is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty forty, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to borrow from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services State Revolving Loan Fund an additional amount not to exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars for pump station upgrades.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, I uh move for final passage of R dash twenty dash forty, and I would like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this is um uh authorizing the mayor and the tre- the city treasurer to borrow uh uh two and uh twenty-two and a half million uh dollars for upgrading the pump stations. Uh this is in normal maintenance and normal replacement. Uh the city uh the wastewater system and uh uh you know, is, you know, not every part of the city is is above sea level, so uh we we need pumps to move the uh the wastewater uh from low levels up up to uh the point where it can reach the uh the the pr- the the treatment plant and the river. And uh so this is just normal. It's a lot of money, but it's it's normal money. Uh it's normal maintenance that has to be spent, and the state uh provides uh a uh an opportunity to borrow this money at a low interest rate, so it makes a lot of sense for us to uh to do this.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. The motion is for final passage of Resolution twenty dash forty. Further discussion on that motion. Saying none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
For fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution twenty dash forty is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty forty-one, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the mayor, mayor and the Board of Fire Commissioners of the City of Nashua, New Hampshire, and Local seven eighty-nine International Association of Firefighters from July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and authorizing a related transfer and supplemental appropriation.
Alderman Tanza.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty forty-one.
Motion is for final.
I I'd like to speak to it too, if uh if I may.
Alderman Tanza.
Thank you. Um I in so um I appreciate um Mr. McAllister and the chief being here tonight. Um I hope that everyone had a chance to also uh they weren't at the meeting where uh Mr. Davidson, uh Chair of the Fire Commission, uh spoke about this contract um and also uh the chief and John McAllister spoke a little bit more at length. I know that we have also received a lot of um some communications from members uh of the fire department uh about what this uh what this contract means to them. Um and I think that they have really put it into words much better than than I ever could um about, you know, the the level of their frustration um in how they're compensated uh versus uh the members of the police department who have similar years of experience uh who are earning a significant more uh amount of money than than they are. Um both police and fire in our city are very well trained, uh very well disciplined, uh great, great departments, um and I think everyone agrees that we're very lucky to have them. Um in in order to to keep departments, uh to keep uh people motivated and wanting to to work and achieve for the city what they've achieved, um I think we have to um do what's right, do what's fair, uh even when it's uh tough uh and um it's tough for people to to ask, especially um at this time. A couple of things I just wanted to to point out is that really what we're debating here tonight is a difference of uh one percent per year, in my opinion. Um as the mayor mentioned earlier, the city uh believes that the increase should be about two point seven five percent um per year uh over four years. The fire department uh and the union is looking for uh about four percent or per year, so um we we're not talking about the whole four percent. Uh what we're talking about is is just the difference. Uh really, what we're debating is just the difference between what the firefighters are looking for and what the city has been uh willing to negotiate for other unions, which is a much smaller number um than some of the ones that we've received um from from uh throughout this process. The other thing I'll say is that um I think every year we have tough uh budget cycles uh since, you know, this is the third time that I've been through the budget on the Board of Alderman, uh and each year we hear there are uh expenses that are coming from either Concord pushed down onto us or um unexpected expenses like the healthcare costs. Um, you know, and each year uh the city uh to the to the mayor's credit, to Mr. uh Griffin's credit, um to Alderman um uh Dowd's credit, um and everyone else who's on the Budget Committee. Uh everyone works together to craft a budget which is reasonable, um which maintains services and um which uh provides for uh everything that that taxpayers in the city need. So um I have faith that even if we pass uh or even when we pass um this contract for the firefighters uh that we will be able to continue to um work on budgets that are fair to both our employees uh and uh to uh the taxpayers in the City of Nashua. So uh I hope uh that uh people will look at this, especially after the conversation we just had regarding the contingency funds. Uh and I hope that uh they'll be able to support this, uh pass this contract tonight um and uh let the firefighters know that we appreciate them uh and we're willing to um you know, do do what's right and fair uh and in their in their favor. Thank you.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution twenty forty-one. Further discussion. Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. Um I want to echo what uh Alderman Tanza said. Um I I've been on the board now. This is my my second term and and um and I agree, each year there's always something that's coming down. Um this year it's the devastating COVID and it's um you know, the the shifting of the retirement system costs and so on. It's always going to be something. Um, I I know that there was expressions used, if not now, when. Um but I remember last year when we were talking about the budget itself, and um I I sat right next to um Chief Rhodes as he was talking about, you know, accepting cuts if necessary and that he would work with whatever budget he was given. Um, and there were some cuts and so on, and and I remember him saying, "Next year, we can't do it. Next year, we can't do it." Well, then the next year rolls around and we have COVID. We did make them whole in the budget, and I appreciate Alderman Clemmons um stepping up and 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 all of us working to to try to get that to happen. I don't think we can punish um the fire firefighters or any employee, I should say, any employee, just because of what what's going on. At the same time, I don't want to see the taxes go up. I don't want to hurt our our taxpayers and our and our residents. But sometimes we have to do the right thing, and I think passing this contract is the right thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, when when you talk to citizens about what's important in the budget, um they don't talk about the little things. They talk about the big things, and the big thing right now that we're dealing with is the fireman's contract. And it's hard because it's big, but it is essential. And um Alderman Tanza was right. You know, every year there's something else that comes down that's pressure on the city. I don't I don't think there's anything that could be pressure enough to make me vote against this budget of this this particular contract. It is fair, it is needed, and it's timely, and uh it has my vote. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you. Um uh, you know, we've all received um you know, letters, uh emails from um, you know, firemen uh explaining how difficult their job is and um and they're, you know, very compelling, well-written letters and you really uh drive home the point that they're that they're trying to make about the risks that they face in their jobs. Um, but at the uh at the Budget Review um Committee meeting, I I said that um you know, certainly we should pay the firefighters uh fairly, and you know, we should pay all of our employees fairly. Um, but um, you know, the firefighters uh are asking for a three and a half percent increase per year for four years, uh which uh, you know, when you compound it, the the actual cost of the city is is going to be seventeen percent over those uh four years. Um, now, if that's if that's what it takes to pay the firefighters fairly, then then that's what we ought to do. We ought to find some way of coming up with that money. But at that uh at the Budget Review Committee meeting, uh, you know, I said that uh, you know, I looked around at um you know, other comparable departments, you know, the Manchester Fire Department, Portsmouth Fire Department. And I saw that um that we are paying our firefighters um more, much more than 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 they pay theirs. Uh and that's true of Manchester, Portsmouth, Concord. Um so the question is, you know, uh to 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 you know, certainly a a cost of living increase, uh you know, cost of living increases have only been, you know, they've been under two percent uh for a number of years. Um, so what the firefighters are asking for is not just a cost of living increase, they're asking for raises. They're asking that their uh that in addition to the cost of living, that their that their salaries uh go up. And uh re- remember, it we're not just talking about a uh you know, and whatever the cost of living increase is, I mean, every every position has a schedule uh of what people in that position are paid, and as they as they achieve longevity, the more years they serve, they get an increase in pay in addition to the cost of living increase. And as they get promoted, uh they also get an increase in pay. Um and when I look at the uh what what other departments are paying, uh and I see that we are paying our people more, you know, than anyone else in the state, we're also paying our people more than um than what they pay in the in a lot of the Massachusetts cities. We pay more than Worcester pays. We pay about the same as Lowell. We don't pay as much as Boston. Uh but remember, those Massachussets, uh uh the firefighters in Massachusetts have to pay an income tax of a of five percent. Um so uh now I came to the conclusion that that our firefighters are being paid fairly. Um, if to say that they're not being paid fairly, you you'd have to say that you know, that the s- the the beginning point, the starting point, where what they're getting paid now is much less than than fair, much less than what they should be paid. And I just don't see that the evidence. And I just don't see that the evidence is there to support that. And of all the mail, all the emails that I got, and I think you all got the same emails, you know, these wonderful letters about the job that the firefighters do, there was, no one challenged me on whether or not we were the best-paid fire department in the state. In fact, some of the letters said just the opposite, that we were the best paid and that's why they came here. That we're the best paid, the best trained, the best equipped. And so to say that our firefighters are being unfairly compensated, that argument just hasn't been made to me. You know, no one has presented any evidence to support that view. Now, if this agreement is not approved tonight, you know, they will go back, there will be fact-finding. And I think that's one of the roles of the fact-finder, would be to look at what other departments are paid. And if, in fact, we're not paying our people appropriately, you know, that can be brought out in the fact-finding. And I would, you know, if I'm wrong in what I'm saying, I'll admit it and I will support the, you know, the increase that they're looking for. But I have, that case just has not been made. So I cannot, I cannot support this agreement as it is before us tonight.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. We're very, very fortunate to have this tremendous firefighting professional group representing Nashua. Yes, we have the best in northern New England. And the best comes with a difficult price tag sometimes. That is to say, you have to pay for what you get. And these guys do a great job, these men and women. I've seen them operate. They are, they are well-trained. They are very professional. And also morale is very, very important. And to maintain that morale, to maintain that professionalism, maintain the level of the best in northern New England, we need to compensate them reasonably and fairly. And the negotiations are over. Negotiations were taking place for months and months and months. The negotiations are done. We're ready to get the contract done. And I think we need to get this contract approved to maintain morale and also to keep these guys coming back to maintain the high level of professionalism. You need to attract the right people year after year as replacements and new people. So I'm strongly in favor of the contract, strongly in favor of the union. And the negotiations were reasonable, fair, and let's just get it done.
Alderman Lopez.
So I think I'm struggling this a little more than some of the other aldermen have spoken because while I understand what the fire department's value is to the community, because, I mean, essentially, you have too close to superheroes in the world, and it's usually firefighters and police. And making sure that the firefighters are treated fairly and making sure that they're one of the municipal services that we offer at a high level of quality, I think is essential. I mean, we've been seeing like a 3,000% increase in fireworks that are being purchased and launched from urban areas. That's concerning to me because those can come down and start fires, obviously. We've had a record heat wave. We had a fire in Jaffrey. Even, we provide fire services to our city very effectively and are called upon as a regional leader as well. So I understand the role that the firefighters have. What I haven't heard a lot about is, at least during this motion, is the impact it's going to have on the taxpayers. I was not on the board during an economic downturn, but I was working at a homeless shelter at the time. And I saw what happened when people lose their homes. I saw what happened when they weren't able to make ends meet. And I'm very concerned about the impact that COVID-19 has had on multiple industries and across multiple sectors. And I am not of the opinion that we're done with it yet. I think we're still very much likely to see another outbreak in New Hampshire. I say another with the understanding that we didn't have one last time. We closed down and prevented one from even happening. And there's so much that's not understood about this that I don't think it's fair to compare this to any other year. I think I've heard several people say every year is going to be a tough year. Well, this year was already going to be a tough year because we had the health insurance issue. That was a big problem. And last year, we narrowly managed to dodge the bullet in some ways by getting more support from the state. But I don't know that if we get ourselves into financial trouble here, we can really count on the state because I would imagine it's going to be in the same situation itself. So I'm really concerned about what we're doing with the tax rate. And I'm really concerned about how this is going to impact taxpayers. I don't have an easy answer and I can't really come up with a specific, you know, recommendation for any other alderman right now because I'm still listening. Because despite my understanding of how important it is for the taxpayers to be able to balance their budget and to be able to stay in the city that the fire department protects so carefully, they don't really have a place to stay if the fire department is slow to a call or not able to respond to something. So this is obviously a very difficult situation. I don't think it's quite as simple for me as are firefighters good or are taxpayers good? I think we have to navigate very carefully here.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. So this evening, we, earlier, we passed a motion to put the money back into the fire department budget. And then we moved the appropriate amount of money out of there into contingency. For, you know, in other words, for this budget, if it passes, the money is there. So we've done step one. And it wasn't going to be very easy. I remember throughout this conversation, it's always been a matter of where are we going to find the money? Where are we going to find the money? And there was a couple of alternatives that I had suggested earlier where we could have bonded something in place of, you know, or done some money shifting around and things like that. Ended up being a lot simpler. And part of the reason it was a lot simpler was because we were able to save some money in the healthcare line. And a good portion of the reason why we were able to save in the healthcare line is because of the fire department and its employees. There was a sheet that we accepted, I think at the last meeting, where it showed that the fire department employees do the lion's share of the high deductible plan that the city is promoting. And so, you know, it's through things like that that we have been able to come up with the money that is needed in order to support firemen and to save money elsewhere. So I am hopeful that this will pass. I think it's a fair contract. I think that the, I look at the parity between this group of people and some of the other fire departments where pay is similar. And we have the best fire department, in my opinion. And because we have the best fire department, we need to pay them accordingly. I don't think that what they are asking for is too much. And I don't think that what we are going to have to pay them in the future is going to be detrimental to our budget. I was on the Board of Alderman. I was one of the aldermen on the Board in an economic downturn. And not only that, but I was on the Board when there were 16 outstanding union contracts on the Board in 2008. And prior to that, we had a decent economy, 2006, 2007. It was the bubble. So people were doing okay. But, you know, we had a more conservative Board then, and contract after contract, and I'm talking years, were rejected. And then 2008 came and the Board changed a little bit. And we finally were able to get stuff done. And we did that in 2008, 2009, 2010, right in the middle of the Great Recession. And the reason we were able to do that was because we started to look at the value that we were getting from our employees. So in other words, what is the right thing to do as far as paying them? What is the fair compensation? How can we come up with the money to afford to be able to pay for what they were asking? And in many cases, it took creative financing, like looking at the healthcare savings and applying that to other things, looking at the end of the year to find money. We have always budgeted this way and we used to do it because we were under the spending cap. And we had to. We didn't have a choice. But we had to pay our employees and we had to pay them fairly. And we had, we were on the verge, in 20, I believe it was 2008, we were on the verge of a strike for the teachers' union. Our schools were going to shut down. And we averted that. I was on that Board that averted that. I'm very proud of that. I've seen when contracts, when it looks like things might be too expensive. This is not too expensive. This is going to be, we will be able to manage this and we will be able to do it. And what this is going to accomplish is going to get the fire department closer in parity to where they need to be. So that in the future, when they're looking for raises and they're looking for things like this and they're looking for their next contract, they won't necessarily have to come out with something as big as it is right now. They might, they might have something more reasonable along the, you know. And I say that in relative terms because I think that this contract is reasonable. But I think what we're getting hung up on here is we're comparing it to what they have gotten in the past and what they have done in the past. And to me, what they have gotten in the past doesn't, hasn't made up that parity difference that they're looking for. So in my opinion, what we have here is a very fair contract. It's something that we can afford. We've proven we can afford it for the next two years anyway, out of the years that are in there because we approved the budget earlier for it. So it's, next year will not be a problem for the firefighter's contract. The retro is retro, so that's not going to be a problem either. So if we're really concerned about this, we're concerned about the out-years. And what I would tell some of the aldermen who may be on the fence is that we will figure it out. And I know that that sounds like, you know, I'm looking at a crystal ball. But I've been through this enough to know that when you put your priorities first, so when you're doing a budget, you put your employees first. And you say, "These are the things that are important." I mean, we did that with the budget this evening. We did it very well. We had to compromise. We had to cut things. We had to, and they weren't easy cuts. But the school department's getting its extra employees. That's important. I wasn't sold on that to begin with. I wasn't. I had to have a lot of hard conversations. And you know what? I came around to it. It's something that I could support because I understand why they need it. The firemen need us now and they need this contract passed because they need these, they need this pay increase to get them to the level where they should be in getting paid. And I think this will make up the difference and we can afford this. So I would, I would hope that my colleagues would take a leap of faith with me, knowing that I have been there, that I've seen these things and that we will get through it and vote for this contract. So, thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, as was mentioned, I've received emails and read Facebook comments making the inference that if we don't approve the current contract that's before us, that we disrespect the members of the fire department. We don't feel they deserve this raise. Speaking strictly for myself, this is as far from the truth and it pains me to hear it. I've always and still do respect the members of the Nashua Fire Rescue and feel proud to stand by them when I can. I fully believe they deserve a fair raise for their continued efforts to protect the citizens of Nashua and make Nashua one of the best cities to live in this country. They have always gone the extra mile to do an outstanding job protecting us as professionals who save lives and property daily. Unfortunately, the city of Nashua is in the middle of a pandemic, through no fault to the members of the Nashua Fire Rescue. And Nashua has many people out of work and many others that have taken a serious hit in their finances due to this outbreak. Many, many of us that are familiar with the pandemic and its financial issues understand there are so many unknowns in FY21 that we have to take a serious look at the budget. And that's why we reduced it significantly to get the proposed tax rate down from four and a half to, it's around probably 3.7. And even that's high. But there are so many things that we don't know might happen in 21. First of all, I want to say that if the contract passes, I won't be upset. I think, you know, they certainly deserve to be compensated well. However, I think that if they restructured their contract a little bit and look towards a higher increase in '22 and '23, when the economy is going to recover, as it has to. If it doesn't, we're all in more trouble. That, I would be more in favor of it and still get the endpoint, I think, that they're shooting for or close to it. You know, as Chairman of the Budget, you know, we looked at the property tax rate for FY21. And as I said, it didn't look good and we've done things to try and get that impact down. Now we're hearing that we're going to have issues in FY22. But I agree with Alderman Clemens that we need to dig our heels in and do something to reduce these impacts that we're going to feel in '22. And whatever we need to do. But this contract, just the way it's structured right now with the percentages and the fact that the percentage increases in '20 and '21 impact pensions and other benefits that add to the cost. That's why the overall cost is about 17%. If we can just reduce that impact in the short term and help them make it up more in the long term, I would be more in favor of that. As I said, if the Board feels that they want to pass it, I'm not going to be upset. I fully don't think the firemen deserve an increase. I'm just concerned, really concerned, that if we get into FY21 and start having issues that we may not be able to afford the salaries that we just passed. And that's a bigger issue. And I, for one, would not like to see that. So I've been on the fence, but right now, the way it's structured, and we can't do anything to change the structure of the contract. It has to go back and be discussed if it's not passed. And I, for one, just think that restructuring a little bit would, and bringing it back to us would get enough support if it doesn't. and bringing it back to us would get enough support if it doesn't pass tonight. So having said that, I'll listen to anyone else as well.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, President Willshire. Uh, and thank you for the debate from everyone on the board here. I think there's been very valid um arguments on both sides with this. I want to start by saying I appreciate our firefighters very much. We are very lucky to live in Nashua where we have such an incredible force. Um, twenty twenty is full of a lot of uncertainty. I think we've been living day by day and week by week in terms of what things are happening in our city, in our houses, with our own jobs. Um, and I currently, after listening to all of this, cannot support something that puts us directly in a way where we are locked into a, a budget we may not be able to, to support in the future. And I think, you know, I'm not as confident as my other aldermen who have said that, you know, we'll figure it out. I just, things are changing every single day. We are in the middle of a global pandemic and I think we have the responsibility to our taxpayers to make sure that we can, we can sustain a, a reasonable uh tax rate. Um, and you know, three, three point seven five is no- nothing to, nothing to, you know. It, it's not, it's not low and we're working on it. Um, but I think that we, we can't just throw caution to the wind and say we're gonna pass this and figure it out later. Um, thank you.
Anyone else?
I had my hand up.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, so I had a question for attorney, I mean, for CFO Griffin, if he's still here. Um, I was just uh wondering, I'm, I'm getting a little bit confused by the one percent raise versus the fourteen percent raise um versus the, based on the individuals who are getting it. Some of them are gonna individually receive more, but collectively it's one percent. Um, so I just wanted to ask uh CFO Griffin, the impact to the overall budget of the firefighters. We're looking at an overall bu- firefighters' compensation increase um of fourteen percent on paper, but seventeen percent in applied reality. Am I getting even close to this right?
Um, maybe I can help out. The way we've done costing historically is hitting here. I, I know when my predecessor, Mike Gilbar, was here in oh eight, oh nine and ten, they toyed with cumulative impacts. But if you look at the bottom of the cost uh sheet, you have that and you take the compensation um per firefighter and it's an average. It, it takes all the firefighters in the bargaining unit, divides into total compensation, you get a number. That's the base year. You look out to the fourth year and that number, you subtract the base number and divide by the base, you get, that's where you get to seventeen percent. Now, as far as the, the members in the unit, they get step increases based on years of service. They get um, they get other things. But predominantly, um, there's base costs and then there's other salary costs. And there's retirement, which is predominantly New Hampshire retirement system, and then there's the benefits.
I just have one other question too, if you don't mind.
Good.
Uh, just because you might happen to know. Um, before it was referenced, Alderman Jettie did some research on comparing the firefighters' um fee or compensation rates to other ones in New Hampshire. Um, I don't really have that doubt him, but is, is the goal that they're trying to reach equality with the police department? And how does, how, how does their compensation levels compare? Is the, are the police compensated more?
I mean, if you take, I mean, the di- the major difference I see is the police department has two uniformed officer bargaining units. My department, on the other hand, has all, all the, all the members are in the same bargaining unit, but I'd never done an analysis dividing salaries by number, by headcount and comparing that to Manchester or Portsmouth. I'm not sure the analysis that Alderman Jettie had performed, but um I have never done an analysis like that.
Okay, it's worth a try.
You have different ranks. You're in the fire department, you have, you have new hires. Police department, you have um new hires. And there's different ranks and so forth. And there are, the bargaining has taken place over decades, so it's, it is hard to compare.
My, I guess my last question is the step uh im- improvements they get for being here longer. Are those competitive? Do you happen to know for New Hampshire?
I wouldn't know if they're competitive, but there's, there's um, in the uh particular collective bargaining agreement, they're laid out pretty effectively. Four years, not ten, you know, there's all, there's all uh folks on, on, on the meeting here know a lot more than I do about it, but yeah. I'm not sure if they're, if they're the same as uh other firefighting units in New Hampshire.
My fault for not looking into that first. I guess, I guess for my own comments, all I can say is this isn't any easier. I'm acutely aware of the irony right now that our number one disaster preparedness plan is coming into conflict with our anticipation of an economic disaster. So uh, I really don't have any idea where to go from here. Thank you, uh, President Willshire.
Alderman Lou, did you have your hand raised?
Uh, yes, I did. Um, it's been so long though. Thank you, um, Madam President. I, I just wanted to um to it, to emphasize that the one really logical, I, I, a way of looking at this to me is just to look at, you know, apples to apples. And I do see, uh, it does look to me like over the last ten years, this contract would would put the um increases over time at parity, pretty much parity with the police department. But that's not really a, I don't know, I don't really think that's an appropriate way to look. Uh, I mean, I think you have to look at what the actual salaries are. And I, I think that um Alderman Jettie did uh us a great favor by looking into, I mean, I think that's the only way to assess this is, you know, what do other fire departments pay? And um, and I think that that's an important question. Um, and I think that's, that determines my, my feelings on this. And I also just wanted to point out that in this um fiscal situation that we're in, I don't want anyone to feel, i- it's the first contract we've come upon this year since COVID nineteen. And so it, it's very contentious. I mean, I, I would love to um I would, would love to vote in favor of this contract. But at some point, we have to start to exercise our fiscal restraint, I feel. Um, I wish it were a shorter contract because then it would just be, uh, there would be less risk there. But it's not a punishment. Okay, whatever we decide, if we, if we were vote, to vote against it, I, I just want to emphasize that there's no punishment here at all. For me, it's looking at cost of living increases and are you asking for more than that? And if you are, then we have to weigh that against the people who are paying these salaries. And if they're not getting in a comparable cost of living increase in their salary, which we pretty much know no one is, then why should we fund this? Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I was gonna speak on using compatibility, but uh I'm gonna choose not to. I'll reserve my comments of comparing to the end because I really do have an issue with apples and oranges. I know the difference. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just to clarify a few comments and questions that were asked before. Um, first, thi- this would not bring parity between the police department and fire department. Over the years, the Board of Aldermen have raised the salaries for the police department, for the uh police patrolmen's union uh at a greater rate than they have for uh the fire department. So uh, a second year officer in the city of Nashua uh right now is gonna make more than a uh someone who's been on the fire department for four years. Um, and even if we pass this, that's still going to be the case. The firefighters are not looking for, are not looking to compare uh apples to oranges. Um, but they are, I think they are pointing that out um i- in a um, in a way so that we can understand why they feel that they're, um, this is a fair uh deal for them. The other thing I would say is that um when, in response to Alderwoman Lou's comments, um, you know, I think if we, I don't think we can look and think and, and compare what um everyone else's uh cost of living increases is going to be. But I think if we look at the level of service um that the fire department has provided uh for the city um in increased number of calls and uh extra uh responsibilities that they've taken on over the last five years uh without asking for anything more or, you know, with agreeing to just a cost of living increase. Um, I have no doubt that they will continue to do that um going forward regardless um because they are professional and that's, that's who they are. But I just wanted to clarify that this will not bring, bring parity, uh may move uh pay rates a little bit closer. Um, but if the police department would still um be paid um more uh than, than firefighters with comparable years of experience.
Alderman Clemens.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President. Uh, in regards to a comment that was made earlier about throwing fiscal responsibility to the wind, I uh just want to state for the record that the, this is the opposite of that. We know what the costs are gonna be because the contract states them. Um, with the fire department, we know how many employees they have uh at any one given time uh because there's a minimum number of employees that they need to have in order to maintain a fire company. So um, so we can fairly accurately uh budget this for year to year. The other thing is the um, the other uh departments um in the city, you know, have a lot of um flexibility and a lot of different um demands and needs. And so a lot of times they can balance their budgets on the back of vacancies and things like that. It's much harder to do uh with the fire department. So, you know, I, I, I think that it's important that we all understand that, you know, we have the costs in front of us. And the fact is that this is a retroactive uh contract if it were to be passed. So it would take care of two thousand and twenty. We've just passed the budget for two thousand and twenty one. So we know that those two years would be taken care of. So really, the question is, can we afford it for the outlying years? And my thought of, of that is yes, we can. Um, we've done it before in the past and we can certainly do it in the future. Uh, I would encourage um my colleagues to vote yes. Thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I, I think a lot has been said about parity and so on, and I've never been one to want to compare one person to another. So I'm gonna leave that conversation to others. I do want to make a comment. Um, please, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, but in my, in my homework that I've been doing, um, one of the things that I found, which is quite um surprising to me was that the firefighters don't get overtime until they hit fifty two hours. Unlike other um employees, when they hit forty hours, they'll get, they'll get overtime. But for the firefighters, it's not until they hit fifty two hours. The other um thing is steps don't happen every year. They happen every five year. And where this is a four-year contract, there may actually be some people that aren't gonna be getting steps during this time. Um, I, I understand where uh Mr. Griffin has come in with the seventeen percent because he's, he's very good at his job and I'm sure he's calculated that based on the employees that will be getting steps. So I'm, I'm not gonna disagree with that, but I just want that to be known to the public. That these are some of the um, the information that uh um we don't see as part of the contract that is, that is there. Um, I also don't disagree with it that Alderman Jettie said about the um the other um Concord, Portsmouth and so on, and that we, we are above those. Um, I, I did a very superficial, and I apologize for not getting more detail, when I went to Concord and, and talked there with the um I wanna say the fire commission, but I don't think that's what it is. But I asked them to kind of give me a, a gentle feeling as to where Nashua's um payroll was. Um, the equity of pay and so on. And they told us for New Hampshire, we were right down in the middle. So now I, I know that's probably comparing us to some towns and, and so on, but um, I looked at us as being one of the best fire uh departments in the, in the state as far as I was concerned. And yet our pay fell more towards midline. They may be higher than what Portsmouth or Manchester or so on, but Manchester is a much bigger, I don't know the size of Portsmouth or even Concord, but um, just wanted to say thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam President. I, I just want to clarify where, where I got my information. So all of these collective bargaining agreements are available online. So you can go to, I think this, I think the state has you know, all, all the collective bargaining agreements for all the cities and towns in New Hampshire. Um, and uh, you know, and each city has it available on its website. So, you know, that's where I got my information. I looked at uh, the, the proposed um collective bargaining agreement that's before us. There's a, I don't remember what the appendix number is, but there's a, a schedule you know, showing what uh, what the range of pay is. And uh for firefighters in Nashua, the range is from fifty two thousand four hundred and sixty to sixty nine thousand seven hundred and fifty seven. In, in Manchester, it's uh forty four thousand six hundred and fifty to sixty three thousand six hundred and sixty one. So, you know, they're, they're a lot lower than us in um in uh Portsmouth, the range is uh forty three thousand eight ninety nine to fifty seven, three sixty two. Uh, in Nashua, lieutenants, their range goes from eighty two thousand to ninety thousand. In Manchester, it's fifty four, uh fifty five thousand to seventy eight thousand. In, in Nashua, captains earn from ninety one thousand to ninety nine thousand. And in uh Manchester, it's uh sixty seven thousand to ninety five thousand. So, you know, I don't, I don't uh pretend to be an expert on labor statistics, but that's that's where I got my information. And uh, you know, I, I said this at the Budget Review Committee and um you know, and no one, no one contacted me since then and said, hey, you, 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 you screwed up, you got your numbers wrong or you know, you interpreted them wrongly. Uh, no one has said that. That, that may be true. Maybe I am way off base here, but based upon the numbers that I reviewed, um, you know, I came to the conclusion that our firefighters are being paid fairly and certainly not being paid unfairly. Um, and you know, when you look at uh how our fire department is rated in the state, I think everybody agrees it's top fire department in the state, if not New England. Uh, now, when you look at our schools, our schools don't fare so well. Uh, how we rate uh statewide uh in a statewide comparison uh we're, we're nowhere near the top. What we spend per pupil is way less than the average. Not only, not only less than other comparable cities and towns, we don't even pay, we don't even spend the average of, statewide, the average amount. So if there's an area that uh that, that needs help in, in this city, uh you know, to, to achieve more parity, I, I would suggest that it's, it's the schools, not the fire department. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly, did you want to weigh in again?
No, I just never lowered my hand. Thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Jettie, if, if you thought that I was stating that your numbers weren't correct, please understand, I will say this to the public, I was not disputing your numbers under any circumstances. I was just saying that I didn't do it as well homework as, as you had done. And I just had a general comment about that throughout the entire state, that we were paid more in the, in, in the middle than being at the highest rate. So, my apologies to you if you felt that I was being critical of your, of your comments. I, I absolutely was not. But I did want to make one more comment of something I forgot about the steps. And that is while their contract, why they're, they don't have a contract, so to speak, no one is getting steps either. So, that's something that we should be keeping in mind is while they're not, they don't have a signed contract, there are members that aren't getting steps that were due steps this past year.
Anyone else? Seeing none, the motion is for final passage of Resolution 2041 by roll call.
Madam President, I think it's worth pointing out that this measure requires the two-thirds majority to pass.
Thank you. Okay, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez.
Hey, I finally did that. Sorry. No.
Thank you. Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah, uh, no.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
You have six yeas and seven nays and one abstention.
And that motion fails. Madam Clerk.
President Wiltshire is, are 2043 currently before you still if that motion failed?
Yes.
Are you, I don't have a motion to call a roll on. Is there a motion, a further motion on it?
I have a motion.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. I move final passage of R 20-043, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck East Utility Incorporated to enter into a term loan and renew a fixed asset line of credit with Cobank ACB by roll call.
Madam President, that's out of order.
Alderman Clemmons.
That's out of order. We haven't disposed of the firefighter's contract.
Okay, you're right. What's the committee's pleasure, the board's pleasure?
Madam President, just a, a point of order. Well, maybe Corporation Counsel can, can advise us on, on what is the, the next necessary step? Because my understanding is that now the contract has to go back to the Board of Fire Commissioners for reconsideration.
Madam President.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, we either have the choice to indefinitely postpone or table. In, in order for them to go back, we would need to table. Is that correct?
I'm going to let Corporation Counsel weigh in here.
If you table, it remains within your authority. You have not fully resolved it. But what you will do is you'll go past the 30-day time limit for your consideration, which theoretically could result in an unfair labor practice complaint being brought that we would lose because you're supposed to dispose of it one way or the other in, in 30 days. So, typically what would be done in a case like this is someone would move to indefinitely postpone. And if the vote follows what the previous vote follows the same path, it will be indefinitely postponed. And essentially, it's, it's back to the, the union on one side and the Board of Fire Commissioners on the other side to negotiate a, a different proposal.
So, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a mo- motion for indefinite postponement.
Alderwoman Kelly has made a motion for indefinite postponement of Resolution 2041. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Clay.
Thank you. So, the indefinite postponement allows it to go back for them to renegotiate. If we tabled it, then it does not allow it to go back.
That's right.
The clear line. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Just for Attorney Bolton, you frequently say we can do whatever we want. Can't we just send it to the fire commissioners, like vote to refer it back to them?
If, well, you can do that, but it would be illegal.
Well, okay. No, we can't.
No, don't want to do that.
Chief Carrigan's online. He can take care of you, Tom.
Can we refer attorney, to Attorney Bolton and then he does whatever must be done? Sorry, I just didn't want it indefinitely postponed because it's not my intention. But apparently the lawyers use language that isn't exactly what we want.
The motion is for indefinite postponement. Further discussion on that motion. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 10 yeas, 2 nays and 1 abstention.
And that motion carries. Resolution 2041 is indefinitely postponed.
Second reading of Resolution R 2043, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck East Utility, Inc. to enter into a term loan and renew a fixed asset line of credit with Cobank ACB.
Alderman Cleaver. You're mute, you're on mute, Skip. We can't hear you.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, I move final passage of R 20-043 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2043. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
14 yeas and 0 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 20-43 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
The tabled ordinance, oh, 2017, tabled as of May 21st.
Does anyone have any desire to take that from the table? Seeing none? New business resolutions?
There are none.
New business ordinances?
None.
Remarks by members of the board? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. What I alluded to earlier, I think comparing one fire department to another, and I'm speaking from my 35 years' experience in firefighting, the comparison kind of made me chuckle. I have a cousin that was a battalion chief in the 12th Battalion on FDNY in New York City, and he served in Harlem. I think he would laugh to see the comparison to somebody say, well, in another part of New York, Staten Island, that the fires are affected by some other physical vortex, that they're hotter in Staten Island than they are in Harlem. They're not. Fires occur. And they occur in every single community. And so, when you start comparing what Alderman Jettie brought up, and that's true, you can go online and you can look. But I wonder if Alderman Jettie looked at Manchester. Now, Manchester is a community, probably between us and Manchester, a population of, they might have 20,000 people more than we do. They also have probably square mileage, possibly maybe two square miles than we do. Yet, Manchester covers their city with 11 engine companies and four ladder companies. In comparison, the city of Nashua, minus, you know, the 20,000 people in the square mileage, covers that duty with only six engine companies and three ladder companies. The workload in the city of Nashua is much greater for our firefighters than they are in Manchester. Yet, those facts were never really brought up. And that's the danger, in my opinion, of the comparison. Each community puts a value on what they want to pay in fire protection. And 32 years ago, the city of Nashua spent taxpayers' money on a Fire Pro report that said, we needed two more additional engine companies. Now, we had, at a meeting, a come up with development in the northern part of this city, in the Tinker Road area. Granted, they're covering that area now. But the more that you build, and let's look what we built. We built down on Marshall Street, off 34, down on Franklin Street. All these buildings that we have now and living spaces put up create more traffic, so there's car accidents. More people are going to have heart attacks, so there's medical emergencies. And there's also those calls with, you know, a type of building fire. So, it's kind of dangerous when you compare. And then also was not brought up with the contract agreement, what is the life of the Manchester Agreement? It seemed pretty much, pretty close. Is it up this year? Would they get more money when they go into their negotiations? So, it's kind of really challenging to really compare what the fire departments. I encourage everybody on this board to look at that original Fire Pro report and weigh the balance. I think previous boards and mayoral mayors have not really treated this fire department fairly, and I can speak from my experience. Where are the two additional engine companies that were suggested in the early 80s? They're not here. Yet, the fire department still answers the call, the call volume. We've got engine companies that are doing 3,000 runs a year. And on top of that, this city asked them to step to the plate to do the safe stations, and they did it. And then also too, when COVID came in, there was not enough masks to put the face covering on the, on the firefighters. What they wore was bandanas in the beginning and saved a mask for the patients. And yes, they went into the homes where the people actually had COVID. Everybody that got transported to the hospital, the first person that they saw was a member of an engine or a ladder company of the Nashville Fire Rescue that came into a system. Taking all that into account, I really, it is apples and oranges, and it goes back to what I said earlier. It's what you or I, the value of each of us in the community, what you want to put on your fire department, what it is worth. It's the same with the schools, same with the police department. I'm disappointed that this board took a duly, fairly negotiated contract that was with the city of Nashua and with local 789 of the firefighters. It was agreed by both parties. And I'm very disappointed that this evening we sent it, cast the ropes off and cast the contracted draft. Yes, it has a procedure. It will go back and depends what the level of comfort is going to be, what the, what you're going to pay or what you feel is paid. But I think Alderman Tenza did bring up a very good point in the discussion. I thank him for doing so. I don't think the firefighters are looking for parity, and I, I know that they're not looking for parity with the police department. But there's many discrepancies. And I think you look at what the police officer paid, I think Alderman Clay brought up a very good point. It refers back to the Garcia decision. What the Garcia decision said, that a municipality does not have to pay overtime until 56 hours. The fire department did negotiate it down from 56 to 52. If you own a business in this city of Nashua, federal law says you've got to pay overtime after 40 hours. But for some reason, in the Garcia decision, it said that, from what the fire law said, 56 hours. And the firefighters, like I say, negotiated it down to 52. As we look over to, you know, very well qualified and great police department, they're on the clock at 40 hours, they get time and a half. If you look at Manchester, and I wish Alderman Jettie would look at that, I think Manchester also gets paid shift overtime at time and a half. If you ever wonder why the firefighters do not call extra shift duty overtime, it's because they don't get overtime pay. They call it shift coverage. And that's reflecting on the, on the amount of pay that we're paying them. So, there's many different things. I think now, when it goes back to negotiation, I kind of hope that the parties will come to an agreement, bring up some of the disparities and hopefully get to correct some of the misinformation that was not entirely put out there. And like I say, I And like I say, I hope in the future, when we look at things, there is a difference in the fire service and the police department. I think as we see in the troubles that are out there today, I think we have a very good police department. I see now the communities that have done very bad things, cops that have done bad things. And to say that they're all the same is wrong, and I would agree with that completely. And comparing the two fire departments together, it's up to us to decide what we want to do. So, Madam President, thank you for, I could not say this because of, and let me clearly say, if I had my chance to vote, I would have voted for that contract. It was duly negotiated and fairly by the city and the local. But due to my son, the reason my son is on the fire department, and because of I challenge and I will challenge the future of my vote because I got elected to vote, and I feel that charter needs to be changed, that we all vote. Some of us have other things that we're close ties. Many members of this board were on the school department, yet they strongly support the school department. I do as well. Not to say that where you are on the school board, does that affect you and your way of thinking? I think right now the charter is a little bit too tight and too restrictive on that. And I do have the common sense, in my thirty-five years of experience of firefighting, to make an informed decision on what we qualify is adequate fire protection for the city. And unfortunately, the charter did not allow me to express my opinion. So, Madam President, excuse me. Madam President, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
You bet. Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to make a comment that actually has little to do with this, our meeting today, and yet in some respects does. Last night, the county met, and we did our budget for the county. And I'm really happy to say that we passed a budget that is increased, but there will be no tax increase. So nothing will be coming down to the residents here in Nashua, or actually anywhere in our county anyways. We were able to do a zero increase on the tax rate, so that's one tiny little bit of help for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, so I guess first I just want to comment that I agree with Alderman O'Brien. I wish I'd had some of the information that he has in the conversation. I think I was the one who started the parity aspect because I understood some of the earlier comments to be saying that there were goals the firefighters were trying to reach, but I don't know what those are. I'm not aware of a strategic funding plan or anything like that. So I did not have all of the information that I needed in that particular area, so I think I sent everybody off on a wild goose chase. My impression was that there was an understanding that there's certain levels the firefighters were trying to reach, and that they were potentially be able to work somewhere else, and I did not understand exactly what was being referred to. So I apologize. The only information that I really had to work with was Alderman Jettie's numbers. I appreciate the work that he did in researching it, and I had no doubt when they were brought up that he would have them sitting on the desk next to him. So there was plenty of good information that was shared, although I don't think I had a complete picture. So I have received plenty of letters and emails regarding how important it is for the firefighters to be compensated in Nashua and the importance of their job, and, you know, even some stories of people that I know being pulled out of fires. But I didn't hear that part, the goals and what they're trying to do, how this might affect their cost of living and that kind of stuff. So I would appreciate that being sent in my direction, so that when whatever negotiation process happens at the, between the fire commission and the union, I'm able to approve it. Because as far as I'm concerned, I'm not in the negotiation process. I get whatever their agreement is sent here, and I don't think the mayor was particularly in favor of it. He made some reasonable points about concerns about funding. I never really disagreed over whether the fire department deserved a certain level of pay. My concern was whether we would literally have it if other issues started to come up over the next couple of months that we can't anticipate. So I don't know that that's going to happen. I do know that the negotiation can continue, at least in the appeals format. So I'd like to see that come back and figure out what to do with it when that does. I would like to make some comments to the public. There were some pretty recent announcements made with regards to COVID nineteen and how it behaves in public health fields and in medical fields, where a number of medical studies that typically take a long amount of time and don't happen, you know, happened long before outbreaks of new diseases hit the U.S., were still taking place. So we still don't really know exactly what COVID nineteen even does to your system. It's looking, based on some of these papers, more like it attacks your arteries, your blood system, your heart. And there's neurological impacts too, that you can have COVID nineteen, you can be asymptomatic, and you could still have long-term impact. You can get COVID nineteen, and you're not immune a couple of months later. There's still a lot of really strange things going on with this disease. And as much as we have been working to support businesses and get people back out into downtown and working, where we go from here is probably going to be a result of how people treat that situation. I know that it's very hot in the kitchen and that people working in the kitchen don't like to wear masks. I know that other people may take their masks off or lose them or find them uncomfortable. And all I can say is, the two states that had the highest numbers of fatalities and infections now have the lowest transmission rate, explicitly because they have face mask ordinances. New York and Massachusetts have basically stopped it in its track and are very effectively managing what was a catastrophic situation because they're taking that step. So earlier we were talking about dancing the streets. I was like, I'm not going to go. I have that opinion. I'm not going to go into any crowds right now if I can avoid them. I'm going to be very careful with how I wear my mask. I don't even take it off when I'm walking down Main Street. That's a personal choice. It's not required by the ordinance, but I don't know who's going to come walk up to me randomly and start talking to me. And more than once, it's been somebody coming up to say, hey, you don't need to wear your mask on the sidewalk, and I'm like, well, now I do. Like, back up a little. So we're still learning a lot, and I know people are frustrated with this. They're really exasperated. But we need to be listening to public health officials. We can't be debating with them all the time. We need to listen to restaurant owners who are trying to maintain their business. I don't want to see restaurants close again, and I don't want to see another period of lockdown. I don't think we can handle it. So I just ask everybody to be very careful with how you're treating it. And then also, I don't know if the other Aldermen are experiencing this, but fireworks are booming literally. With the fire department, you know, pay being negotiated, I feel like it's only fair not to put them in a situation of dealing with more fire danger than necessary. If people could show a little bit more consideration about how they're celebrating randomly, I think it would be well appreciated by many. I would like to point out that with the Fourth of July fireworks run by the city canceled, that means that there's no schedule for veterans or people with PTSD to be aware that they need to be shielding their ears or doing something or distracting themselves. So popping off fireworks at three in the morning or whenever you feel like it, there are people living all around you, and it's not fair to them. So I appreciate all the patience everybody's had up to this point with the COVID nineteen. I think largely our results here in New Hampshire, where we haven't had any community-based transmission really, we just had outbreaks in the long-term care facilities, that was you. That was because you went home, and you stayed home, and you made sacrifices. I don't want it to be for nothing. I mean, I know that everybody has the instinct that they just want to move on, but I don't think we're ready to do that yet. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. So I, a little bit of a lighter note to go with what Alderman Lopez just said. I was in a gas station the other day, and these two guys, workers, whatever, were in there, and they didn't have a mask. And the attendant said, oh, can you please put your mask on? And he says, oh, he says, I thought we were in New Hampshire. We didn't have to do that. She explained, oh, we have a city ordinance, and she goes, and the guy said, oh, well, I guess that's better than Massachusetts. And I thought that was kind of funny because the, you know, we tend to, people tend to think that New Hampshire is a little bit more of you know, the live free or die, but you know, there is a reason that they call Nashua a Nashi-Chuset, so just thought that was amusing. But I will say that I was disappointed with the vote this evening. I thought, you know, we had a fair contract in front of us. You had folks like Don Davidson, a fiscal conservative himself, supporting the contract, and you had, you know, lots of people that, from all sides really, saying that it was a fair deal, and it's a shame that it went down, particularly because we put money into the budget to support that, and we would have been able to fund it for this year. We'll see what the mayor does, if he's going to veto the budget or, and have that come back to us. I guess that remains to be seen, but I was proud of the work that the Budget Committee did. I think that we definitely took a very, we took a budget that was pre-COVID, and we really pared it down by quite almost two million dollars out of it. And I think that, you know, that's not an easy task. I was happy that the police department is going to be fully funded, and they're going to have their employees that they need. We didn't defund the police in Nashua. We funded the police in Nashua, and I'm proud that we did that. We also took care of our school department, and we put some money into, lots of money in there. We got money from the state. We also, they're going to hire seventeen new employees. I hope that, you know, those employees stay on next year, considering we're going to be facing a seven percent tax increase. And it seems most of the board is worried about next year. I happen to think that they will make it through. But I was very disappointed in the fact that while we took care of our police department and we took care of our school department, we neglected the fire department. I thought that was a shame. And I hope that when they go back to the negotiating table, they have, we, as far as the budget is concerned, we put a million dollars, over a million dollars in contingency there for negotiation. So there's some money to work with, and hopefully they can come up with a deal that uses that money and get some, some well-needed raises to get those folks what they deserve. Thank you very much.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. So I have just a few remarks. I know it's getting late here. I wanted to first thank you for taking into consideration changing the format so that we could take public comment virtually. I think it worked out well, and I appreciate you making that adjustment for everybody. Secondly, I wanted to say thank you to Great American Downtown for an amazing first farmer's market. There were a ton of Nashuans out just enjoying what was put on there, and the new, there were plenty of complimentary comments around the new location by City Hall. So that was a really great event. I'm looking forward to, I think it's like seventeen more weeks. So make sure you come out on Sundays, ten to two, at the City Hall Plaza. There's plenty of really great vendors. And then lastly, the Pride Committee is really proud to be able to put on a virtual Pride this Saturday from ten to four. I'm sorry, ten to four. I am tired. Two to four, that's a really long time for an online event. I promise you it's not that long. It'll be available through our Facebook page as a livestream. It'll be on Nashville Community Television Channel sixteen, Access Channel ninety-six, and through the city of Nashville website as well. So don't miss it. There's an incredible group of people who have come forward, from speakers to talent, and it's just going to be an incredible event. So hope you all can tune in.
Thank you. Alderman Lou?
Thank you, Madam President. I have just three comments I'd like to make. First of all, some of the correspondence we've received meetings, correspondence has concerned me, particularly regarding the assessors department. And I wonder if it would be a good time, we haven't had an update from the assessors department in a while, we could hear from them possibly at the next meeting. I just want to comment also on the concern. I really wish that Alderman O'Brien had been able to express his argument, his arguments prior to the vote. It would have been. I also just want to express that unfortunately, you know, I hate hearing that the fire department had to work without proper equipment, the proper masks. But I think that is an argument, you know, a complaint that's reasonable, but not really a basis for a raise. Certainly, we should try to make that not happen in the future. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I too want to thank you and compliment you for arranging for public comment. It's kind of disappointing that nobody from the public. I don't know if they couldn't figure out how to do it or just weren't interested. You know, just a couple of employees who took advantage of it, but thank you for doing that. And also, I took Alderman O'Brien's invitation to look more closely at Manchester. And I know he's going to accuse me of comparing apples and oranges again. Maybe this is a grapefruit. When I look at the total budget for Manchester's fire department, it's twenty-one million dollars. Nash was, is twenty-seven million dollars. So we're spending six million more on our fire department than Manchester is. I don't pretend to know what the significance of that is. I just find it interesting. And I'm sure that, I'm sure that the firefighters and the union and the commissioners will will, you know, in the future, provide us with more, more data, more information about, you know, about wages and why they feel that they're being unfairly compensated. So I look forward to hearing that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't see anyone else. Alderman Tanza?
Madam President, sorry, just very quickly, and I, I'm disappointed by the comments about not having more information about the firefighter's contract because there was a much longer public hearing where a lot of the information was shared with us, not specifically as it relates to Alderman Jettie's concerns about comparing the different cities and towns. But I mean, I'll just say that I think the point of our meetings are not to rehash everything that is said in the committee meetings, but I think that it would behoove members of the board if there's an important or something that they have questions about to maybe go back and look at the work that the committee did, especially in this case where there was a negative recommendation by the committee, because I think that would have maybe answered a lot of folks' questions and on this issue at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tanza. Anyone else? Alderman Cleaver?
Yes, I would like to say that year after year, Nash was recognized as one of the safest cities in the country. There's two really, really good reasons for that. One is our excellent police department. We do a fantastic They do a fantastic job and everybody recognizes that. And the other reason, of course, is the fire department, they do an equally great job. And I'm very disappointed in the outcome of the vote. I think they deserved this contract, negotiated in good faith with the city. And we don't want to rehash that again, but I just wanted to point out that parity is a good thing. There's no reason why the firefighters who face the dangerous job should not be near parity with the police department. And I don't think that should be a negative at all. The other thing I wanted to point out, having created a lot of road races and events over the years, police get detailed money, overtime money, a lot for construction and other things. Firefighters don't have that opportunity, even though they might be called out for a broken leg or whatever it happens during the event. They don't get money for the details. And that, that makes a lot of extra money for the police officers, which they deserve. But when you look at parity, there's a lot of different angles to look at. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to say that this was a difficult vote for me. I've always been a supporter of our fire department. It wasn't about the fire department, my vote, it was about the affordability of a contract, no matter whose it was. And I have the utmost respect for our fire department. Committee announcements.
Can I say something first? I did put my hand up.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yeah, I too was sort of disappointed with the decision that was made tonight. Because I remember when the chief talked about, you know, the training and all that our firefighters get, that basically it doesn't mean that those other fire departments are getting that same type of training and the same on-the-job type of training, as well as going away from training. And I think that the equipment that, that they are afforded each year, because we do give a couple of equipment and everything, that it also helps with the firefighters and what they have to do. And the fact that they are also used by other cities, not just they help wherever it's necessary. I just feel that we sort of let them down. And I do understand the issue around money, that I do understand very well. But I also heard all the testimonies for over several years, how we have not given them. And with that said, I think that we all should be ashamed of ourselves because it's, it's just snowballing over and over again. And I, I can't say exactly where the money's supposed to come from or what we need to do, but we have done injustice to them, not just this year, but previous years. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, we have a special Board of Aldermen meeting tomorrow night. And immediately following, we're going to jump right into infrastructure. Many of the things that are on the agenda for the special Aldermen's meeting will be discussed immediately afterwards in the, in the infrastructure agenda. So please stick around, you're more than welcomed. Also to the public, what is, we're expecting a presentation from Director Marshon for renovations to the Transit Center Plaza, located at Thirty Elm Street behind City Hall. And the renovation will include the updates for the plaza, the Transit Center building, and bus platform. So anybody, any of our citizens that use that facility, please tune in tomorrow night and catch the presentation. Thank you. Oh, in the meeting, seven o'clock, correct?
Yes.
Seven o'clock, thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, Thursday night, Joint Special School Building Committee meeting, seven o'clock, online meeting. I just wanted to quickly state that we have commenced work at Fairgrounds Middle School. If you go by there, you'll see the construction trailer. The area's been marked off for the portables that will be needed, and they're in the back of the school. And they will be starting with these new security enhancements at the, at front of the school. And very shortly thereafter, we'll be moving over and starting in, at Penachuk as well. So a lot of work going on, and we'll be approving some vendors' contracts tomorrow night, Thursday night, sorry.
Anyone else?
Sorry, PDC will be meeting Monday night to, it's actually a public hearing to discuss the bill, the ordinance relating to umbrellas on Main Street.
Anyone else? Any other committee announcements? Seeing none, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Discussion on that motion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Oh, yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, please.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes, and good night.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wulsher.
Yes.
You have fourteen A's and zero N's.
That motion carries, we are adjourned at eleven oh six PM.